And the reasons why we're asking for the council's support. We exist, the company exists in a very competitive world. The wire and cable industry is unforgiving. The competition is intense. Even though, when I said we have five factories, that might imply that we're a big company. We are not a big company. Okanite stands alone. It has no parent that is wealthy, that can fund us in anything we do. It has no affiliate that provides a separate stream of income. And most of our competitors are anywhere from 10 to 15 to 20 times our size, depending upon the metric you want to apply. Whether it's number of employees throughout the world, whether it's numbers of factories, whether it's dollars that they realize, we can't begin to compare with them. But I use the word "compare," not "compete." When any of them decide, in a setting, for example, to, and this happens, teach Okanite a lesson, or to make a significant move into markets that we serve, they can, anytime it suits them, undercut us on the price, even to the point of selling below their costs. Now, we know what it costs to make cable. And putting aside the legality of selling below cost, they know we really couldn't afford to go to court over something like that. And besides, it wouldn't behoove us to do, because they could just keep doing it, and we couldn't go to court every time. So we wouldn't accomplish much, except to spend extraordinary amounts of money on anything but making cable. So, we can't, the only way we can fight that, the only way we can fight the competition that can, that has well-to-do parents, in many instances, by the way, foreign parents, which can fund them in these things when they make a competitive effort. The only way we can fight it, there are three grounds on which we can do it. Two of them apply directly tonight. And so, if I might, I would like to describe those. We can compete, first of all, because of the quality. But I, that's easy for me to say, I work for the company, and you could very well say, any one of you could very well say to me, "Oh, sure. You know, you stand in front of us and you tell us it's the best cable anybody can buy, or the best money, best cable money could buy? Sure you, you know." And I couldn't be able to prove it, not in a presentation like this. So, I'll just say it for what it's worth. We think we have the premium product in the market today, and we've convinced, you know, a fair number of customers that that is in fact the case. More importantly, more germane to what we're doing tonight, is we can compete with the big boys, with the big companies, because of manufacturing efficiency. And that's what, and because of our employees, and I'll save the employees for last. But what this is about tonight, and what that particular configuration that is up on the, I was gonna say board, but it's the wall. But the configuration that you see up there is the absolutely optimum configuration that we could possibly get here in Cumberland. It is the configuration that if we get it, and if you allow us to get it, would enable us to have, number one, not just the machine, not just the machines that we need, not just the machines of the size that we need. We invest in the most modern, most technologically advanced machinery money can buy. So that's the first thing. And we could house it here. We could not house it in the other factory, in Ashton, but we could house it here. More importantly, we could house it in a configuration, it took us a long time to figure this out, by the way, but we could house it in a configuration that would give us absolutely maximum manufacturing efficiency. That's critical in the competitive world we live in. Because when it comes to being able to cut the price in a competitive setting, the more efficient we are, the more cable we can make per minute, the more feet we can run per some unit of time, that's what enables us to compete. And we can do that with all of our other factories, and do it to a fare thee well. We need to have the freedom and the ability to do it here. And we can do it here if we get that particular configuration. Now, last but not least, someone asked about whether we had any of the workers here, no, who are not executives. We should have, you know, I think in retrospect, we should have. So they could tell you directly just how they feel about this. But the third prong on which Okanite's success rests is the dedication, the loyalty, and the capability of the employees. And in Rhode Island in particular, we have an extraordinary group of people that have shown a dedication to this company, that, I shouldn't say it surprises us, because it exists company-wide. But here, there's a quality to it that I personally have observed, that is a little bit, well, it's pleasing, and it's encouraging, and it makes those of us in management proud, you know, to be able to say, "This is our workforce." So, I said a moment ago, it's employee, the company's employee-owned. So, being employee-owned, and since they're the shareholders, the management operates the company, why? For what reason? To benefit the employees. It's in effect, a trust that is operated for the benefit of the employees. And so, what goal would we have, to come before Cumberland and say, "We're gonna move the company to Texas," something like that? And hurt the employees? We're not made that way. The management is not made that way. We run the company as a trust. What would it mean to say, that because the products we make in this factory, almost all go down to the Gulf, which they do? So you would say, well, a smart businessman would eliminate the transportation costs of what is a heavy product. Cable, wire and cable on those reels is heavy. So you would say, well, you know, how intelligent is that, to incur those shipping costs from Rhode Island down to the Gulf? It would be unintelligent, but for the fact that we're running the company for the benefit of the employees. So what should we do? Should we take the families that have depended on their employment with Okanite, and tell them, "Unless you're willing to relocate to Texas, you don't have a job?" We couldn't, we couldn't live with that. The management could never accept that. And so, and I'm not making, I don't wanna make it sound exclusively altruistic. It's not that. Alone, it's not that alone. There's a benefit. These people are expert at what they do. They turn out an excellent product. Because they're expert at what they do, it's not a smart idea to lose them either. So, it's one of these things where both hands wash each other very well. So, in the final analysis, what we're asking of the council is a, to share with us the motivation that we have for the well-being of our company, and to share with us the goal of an unlimited future commitment to Cumberland. If we get that configuration, what we've done is, we've designed, not only for present business, not only for business 20 years from now, but we have a design for the layout of the plant, that would enable expansion, not physical expansion around, but would enable the placement of machines that would take care of any conceivable business that we could, in any logical scenario, envision for the next 50 to 60 years. As I said, we run the company as a trust for others. The present management, you know, we share something in common, that's kinda like old age, I hate to use that expression, but we do. And so, our time is limited, but if we get this, the employees here, and then the future management, time is not limited. There is an unwavering, unqualified, open-ended commitment to Cumberland, which, for the foreseeable future, with no time limit, would enable us to stay here. And so, we're asking humbly for the council to vote in favor of the zone change that would enable that particular project to be built, and thus to secure the future of the employees and the facility here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes. Mr. Juliana, let me say that. You're in my district, and I'm excited.
The new plant.
Both of them will be, south of 295, right?
I'm sorry, sir.
No, it's north of
It's gonna be north of
That's 295.
So, in any case, I worked 18 years in the wire and cable industry. So I know everything, and every process, from drawing copper to producing plastic, rubber, extrusion, cable assembly, and I know the skill set
Right.
And the pride that your workers must have, to keep those machines running every day. It's such a unique skill set, that they should be proud of it. Because it takes an amazing amount of knowledge to know how to fix a machine that's that old.
It does.
So, when you talk about your history from the 1800s, and you're gonna keep it in the town, I just wanna applaud you, your employees, for keeping it.
Thank you very much, sir. I'd love to ask the next question. I'm not sure whether I would be presumptuous in asking, but could I know which competitor you worked for?
ITT Rail Electric.
They're not a competitor, good.
They're now out of business.
They're not a competitor of the Okanite Company.
I didn't know the new one, I thought they made tech.
He's aiming for a job.
No, he has a good job.
We, we, it is a skill set that is enormous, and I think what, Mr. Silver can probably address it better, will, can address it better than I can, but especially with the equipment that we have now, which, as I said, is outmoded, it's astounding that they're turning out the product that they are, and with the quality that they are.
So this will make their job easier?
No, that's what I mean, they deserve it.
No, I mean the new plant.
Oh, sure, sure.
Will we be able to ask questions?
Yes, I gotta bring my next question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Welcome to Rhode Island.
I ask Mr. Silver to come forward on
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ ...[949.87]
Eighty, ninety, a hundred miles every single day, you know, three shifts. It's just not a reasonable thing to think you're going to get the quality out of your employees, or they're going to have a quality of life doing that. And so, we abandoned that idea. And this will, we can get the state-of-the-art equipment and this configuration, but there's other things it really can't do for us. This doesn't provide us with a lot of the warehouse and distribution space we need. It provides us with a footprint large enough to put the equipment in and make the cable, but I've got to do something, I've got to do something with the stuff that feeds the beast, and then I have to do something that takes it away. So, we are, that's why we needed the expansion all the way out to the west. And we've relooked at this again, and we are going to maintain the Martin Street location, and we're going to use that as a warehouse distribution center. So, we're going to manufacture, we're going to manufacture the cable here, and we're going to receive raw materials and then bring them just in time to this plant to feed the manufacturing operation. And those finished goods, that we don't have a direct shipment, you know, once we make it, if it's not going to ship within a day or two or a week, that is going to go over to the other location. And, you know, we'll ship it from there when we get a release. So, we're not only utilizing this property, we're going to be utilizing that property. And I think if we can get this approved, I mean, the possibilities are endless. And like I say, we've got a very excited workforce. And I know I saw, we had a visit from a congressman. And I saw one of our employees got interviewed on the floor, and it was nice to see how excited he was. So, again, reiterate what Frank said. We are, we hope that you all agree with what we're saying tonight. And I know we're highly prejudiced, but we're a very proud company. And we have a lot of longevity in our company, which I think really says something about it. I've got forty-four years. When I got promoted and came up to Ramsey about ten years ago, my secretary had fifty years. And I was the least senior person on the executive floor, and I had thirty-four years. You know, so that, despite the fact it was a bone in the tooth, we have been able to be so competitive and so innovative. And that's the only way, to be as small as where, that's the only way we can compete. And I think, again, it goes back to the, back to the same thing. It's the employees, and having employees engage, and having them participate, and know that what they're doing is, they're not working for a company, they're working for their company. Makes a big difference.
Now, it says existing industrial facility. Is that the entire block?
The block is five industrial, that's the old novelty.
That's the entire, it's not just that square?
Yeah, that's square, and...
That, you know, this is all this up to...
What is that, loading docks on that side? Loading docks?
There's loading docks here, yeah.
All right. And it says in the planning board report that there is going to be access around the entire building. Can you show us where?
Yes. This currently exists on the east, on the firey side.
Yeah.
And then, you know, for a lot of reasons, fire reasons, and they just swallow up traffic. Where did they come in from? Off the diamond hill, and we'll have the trucks service the plant. Won't be, we'll have an entrance here, but they won't come in here, they'll come in here. So, you don't have anybody, you don't have trucks stacked.
They're covered in industrial drive only, right?
Yeah. They will come right up here, about thirty-five industrials right here will be coming in that driveway right before you. And then, all the way goes out the back, around here.
Scott, give me a moment.
Pretty much works for, it says eight P twenty-one lot fourteen. You have to work out the ratios and all that, you know, the term for the rest of it.
If anybody testifying leaves the classroom, could they take their microphone with them? Counselor Kearns has a question, so would you be willing to answer it?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question, sir.
Would you be willing to answer a question?
Certainly.
Counselor Kearns.
In terms of capacity, what capacity utilization are you using on all three shifts now? And how many pounds of product are you pushing out today versus what the new plant expectation would be?
Well, there's different products. We're, I'll give it to you in easiest things, because I can't get into all the different millions of feet based on product, because it wouldn't mean anything to you, so I'm going to use dollars. Okay? We currently have a revenue flow out of that plant of about a hundred and twenty-four million a year. I know that if we don't grow by fifty or sixty percent with this, then we're making a huge mistake for the return on investment. I think we can grow it.
Is this plan only?
That's this plan only. The efficiencies that we're going to gain, you know, someone, the other thing I should mention, because I think it was, someone asked, I think, a very, very good question about if we're not going to add people, we're going to get much more efficient, or we're going to lay people off. Our particular business was very dependent, our core business was very dependent on housing starts. And when the bubble burst, we had increased the productivity of all our plants, modernized all our plants, and we were working seven days a week even with the modernization. And when the bubble burst, we had, we were carrying in each location, five locations, roughly twenty-five to thirty more employees than the activity level justified. We haven't laid off, we have not laid off an employee, right? The bubble, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, we have not laid off any employees. Now, there's been retirements and attrition for other reasons, and we've added employees in some cases, but we would not lay employees off, you know. We're going to make our plants more efficient, and if we find out that that requires less manpower, we'll let the natural attrition process take its course. We haven't done that. And by the way, we did it because, again, we're employee owners, and we didn't want to put owners and family out on the street. But we also, we also kept our employees because we were able to take very short lead-time business, where you had to deliver, a lot of business where you needed to get out in like a four, six-week window. And if we pared down our crews, we wouldn't be able to take the business and be able to satisfy the shipping demand. So, it's worked out for us with being able to take business, and not only take business, but perform when we took it, which led to more business. So, we are going to lay the employees off, but we hope to gain, these machines are going to run, the new machines we're buying, and I'll give you an average, at least four times each machine faster than the current machines. Four times.
Counselor Landy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Facility, thank you. I just had a couple of quick questions for you. I did note that you're operating, you plan on operating twenty-four hours a day at this new location. There is a residential neighborhood right across the street from where you'll be located. So, I wanted to ask you, based on the new types of machinery and/or the old that might be moved, but it sounds like it's going to be new, what type of noise and/or other pollutants, noise pollution or other pollutants may be generated by the facility?
Firstly, our operation, and my director of safety environmental is here too, if you want him.
If you all want to come up in groups, you can too.
Yeah, I mean, these questions, a great question, Mr. Landy, and as a matter of fact, I was going to address that because that's an obvious concern. I can answer it partly, and if you need Mr. Groom to come up, our director of safety environmental, he can. But we don't have any emissions or discharges with the processes that we have now, or where we have any when we modernize. And the modernization is going to be, it's going to be ergonomically better for our employees, which means we'll have soundproof, and then we'll have other things on the equipment that the old dogs don't have. And we have no lab discharges, we have no emissions whatsoever. You won't know what we're operating, other than you'll have shift change. You could have, you know, thirty-five to forty-five people on the first shift, and to balance, you know, thirty, thirty on second. And that's, from an activity standpoint, that's what you have. You'll have no noise, and you'll have no emissions, you'll have no discharges.
No green, greenhouse gases?
No. In fact, I must say that the one thing we are doing, because it's inefficient, and the system was antiquated and designed poorly in the beginning, but we're taking the boiler out. We're not going to have a boiler in the number five that's coming out. I don't know if you guys noticed, but all those big units, there's thirty units on the top, they're heating and cooling units, at a huge cost, we're taking them off the building because they're not efficient and they're not...
The old building? You're talking about the old building?
Yeah, the old building, yes.
Counselor Kearns.
Mr. President, I have one more.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And the silos, they're going to be on the southern end, they're going to be in the back of the building along the highway?
Yeah, when we had other, we had, I'm trying to remember, we had more than one options. This is our optimum. And the other option, we had to put the silos up on the, up on the east north section, just because the configurations we have with our expansion, that was the only place that fit. They'll be in back of the plant.
They're going to be, we're doing course sample size here, right this area right here, by now, we need a solid piece of soil so that they can take away the silos. We're going to go over here someplace, in back.
And related to that question, would the open storage for those large wooden wheels, if you're still going to have those there, is that going to be in the back too?
Well, we'll have nothing stored that can be seen from the street. It'll all be on the back south side of the building. And again, a lot of what may have been, had to be stored outside, particularly finished goods, as I said, we started looking at that, and we said, no, we're not going to do that. We're going to utilize our other location as a warehouse at Martin Street.
Counselor Kearns.
Do you have water boilers? Do you have a factory water system in the pellet plant?
Yeah.
Do you have a what? Do you have a factory water system?
No, we're going to be using...
Internal, how many gallons of water do you use now versus after the modernization?
Can you turn around towards the solicitor, raise your hand.
Testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
I do.
Just state your name for the record.
My name is Christian Wagner, Director of Facilities Engineering for the Okanite Company. I live in Franklin Lakes, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, to answer the question, currently, our Martin Street, we use about forty-six thousand gallons of water a day, or about seventeen million gallons a year. In the new facility, with this modernization, all our water will be closed-loop cooling, and it goes through a chiller unit and back in. We're going to use somewhere around two thousand gallons a day for the process.
So, it's going to be monitored? So, you have no effluent from that at all?
That is correct.
So, you don't have any treatment plants or anything?
No treatment plants.
And what would your consumption be afterwards?
Our process water usually will be about two thousand gallons per day.
Used to be?
I'm sorry?
You said you used forty-five thousand gallons a day?
Currently, we're using about forty-five to forty-six thousand a day.
And that's going down to two thousand?
Down to two thousand.
You know, Chris Chandler's not going to like that.
I was going to say the same thing. While we gain in taxes, we're going to lose in water. But I guess that's part of the environment.
Mr. President?
Counselor Kearns, you all set?
I'm good.
Counselor, what's your next?
I think this is a great presentation. This is in my district, and my major concern is what will this project look like from the street, particularly down...
They'll get their, I think...
We have some renderings.
You've got some elevations?
We have the engineer tonight, Mr. Schmidt. And again, this question's understood, but I definitely, it's part of the presentation. Mr. Landy, there was also, you had asked about, you know, the neighborhood and whatnot. I think that sort of dovetails with what Mr. Schmidt was asking about, but at the planning board, it was well-attended by the Broadview Acres neighborhood, and they asked very poignant questions. And one of the, matter of fact, one of the ladies who lives closest was talking about the color lighting and how it's, it may not sound like much, but for her, it's kind of like eternal day, but the way that the lighting is at night. And that's going to be addressed also, just as one of the concerns, you talked about the neighbors there, and that's one of the things that they asked about, that Okanite addressed, that will be, that will not be the case. She will not get the same, you know, those people at the very end of Broadview Avenue are not going to have that same experience under the new configuration. But I have, not only do I have Mr. Wagner here, but also, as Mr. Silver indicated, there are other people with respect to the manufacturing process. I'm sorry. Usually, people tell me to stay away from the mic, I'm too loud. But so, I mean, again, to try to keep a flow to it, obviously, everyone's here, they're not going anywhere. Any other questions that come up in the course of the presentation about, you know, about the operation itself, everyone is here to address that. But I wanted to move forward, if I may, at this time, subject any questions you have, with at least a little bit of the site review at this point. And then, Mr. Schmidt, we can get into the questions that you have about that. Mr. Kearns, I'm sorry?
Another technical question from Counselor Kearns.
Sure.
You extrude, you buy rubber from a rubber manufacturer and export?
We are a rubber manufacturer, but we do not extrude rubber in this facility. We're buying polyethylene compound resin, and then with that resin, we have cocktails that'll make different products and different jacket material. We also buy PVC, we have some PVC jackets.
And you're going to be installing any ventilation to get the fumes from that production?
Yes.
And where is that going to be released?
I thought you said there wasn't any, anything coming out of the oven?
No.
No, the rubber and plastic...
You're talking about fumes?
Has a distinct smell. I mean, when I smell it, I feel like I'm at home, but that's because I'm a manufacturing guy too.
There's different types of insulation in jackets. There's what, there's thermal set. Thermal set is when you cross-link the molecule...
Can't in every building?
No, no, that's my point. The thermal set operation cross-links the molecules, and there is gases or emissions from that process. That's not what we're going to do here. It's mostly thermoplastic.
I want to see the, what the building's going to look like.
Are you, is the board done with me?
When they look, I mean, people are asking the questions they have. I don't know if they have any other questions, per se. Do we have the renderings? So, we can see what it looks like? I don't know what else you plan to present, you know.
Mr. Casali? Testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it. I do, please state your name for the record, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, just for the record, my name is Joe Casali, I'm a registered professional engineer with offices in three hundred...
There's a camera on you right there, and they can't see, they can only see the back of your head if you stand there.
Why am I standing right here, Mr.?
No, you've got to stand at the podium, sir. Don't be afraid to look at the, if you can see it properly from there.
So, you know where the site is at the two ninety-five Industrial Road? That's the initial lot, lot eight oh six, which is the large piece, five hundred and seventy-four thousand square feet.
And that's already zoned industrial?
That is.
Mr. Casali, hold on just one second. May I interrupt, Mr. President, just for the purpose of the public hearing? I don't know what kind of experience this board has had. Mr. Casali testified many times in front of our planning and zoning boards.
Is he the engineer that's going to work on this project?
Yes. He's going to make sure the record is accepted as the engineer and an expert in that field.
Is there any objection to qualifying Mr. Casali as an expert witness? Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So, Mr. President, you see the two auxiliary lots, lot fourteen and three fifty-eight, which are not zoned in the industrial zone. Those are the commercially zoned pieces. As we spoke of earlier, the applicant is looking to put about a ninety-six thousand square foot addition on the existing commercial building, excuse me, the existing industrial building. There's the, looking at the front of the building from where you would see it. So, this, you know, front face was the, with the Okanite logo, you can see the other front...
Doesn't want to state to that picture, I guess.
Rendering. Those are the rear to the site.
Go a little slower, sir.
And the loading docks.
Take a look at it. Go back to the front, please. There. That's Diamond Hill Road?
That is not. That is Industrial Road.
Okay.
That is also the view from Industrial Road. And this is the back of the building. You wouldn't be able to see this from two ninety-five, but if you were standing on that property line, these are the two views you would see. We'll get to the view on Diamond Hill Road. I know it's important, it'll subsequently follow up with some of the slides. In terms of the proposed silos, those are the specific locations, Mr. President. There's four silos, they're thirty-six feet in height. You can see that's the rendering of what the silos are going to look like. Again, that would be from the rear part of the building.
What are the silos used for, do you know?
I do not.
The question is the specific use of the silos.
Plastic resin, I was told. Is that correct?
Yes, there are plastic resins, polyethylene and PVC.
And they have no, they have no connection to the out to the air, like directly through a tube into the facility, correct?
The current Martin Street, say, has the silos as well, so we used to have... Go ahead, Mr. Casali.
The only site work, some of the site work we're doing is we're reworking those initial parking spaces to have about a hundred and thirteen spaces. That exceeds your code. There are other auxiliary batuminous areas. You can see the third access that's coming in to interconnect. There is also some pavement, Mr. President, back in this general area. In terms of the berm, the view straight in from Diamond Hill Road, the initial rendering that we presented at the planning board was one of highlighting some of the stone that we have here in the town of Cumberland with sort of an earthen berm, and then have non-deciduous trees planted on top. That was conceptual in nature. So, just a review from a site plan, that would encompass that entire green area. When we sat with the landscape architect...
Looks like an island.
We've come up with the area that you now have the existing stone wall, and that's the, you know, three to four-foot decorative stone wall, and then you really can't see any of the facility behind there, because we want to plant not only the canopy trees in front of the stone wall to have our street trees, shade trees about fifty feet on center, but we also have the non-deciduous, you know, the evergreen type and the blue spruce types trees in the rear to have that twelve-month opaque visual board.
Now, Mr. Casali, these, basically, the engineering given as we speak is taking place and different options to be explored, correct?
Yeah, we've just initially commenced on the design about four or five days ago. So, we'll be working through this process, and it's not a, you know, this is not a final design, this is where we are from where we came in the initial process, and I think we're open to different, you know, concerns of the town. This is primarily from the Diamond Hill Road entrance. We had promised the residents that you'd not be able to see our operations, we'd close up that existing entrance, and that you'd have more of a buffer than really you do today from the commercial uses that exist.
And again, the, this is one of, those are two of the options that have been explored to date, correct?
Correct.
Counselor Kearns.
Could you go back to that slide? Yeah, the one with the overhead view. No, the one that shows the silos, right there. What system are you going to use to offload the resin? Is it a blower system? And will it be at a decibel level that's tolerant in the neighborhood, and will it only be during the day?
We only accept deliveries during the day. There are truck-mounted blowers right on the trailer.
Which are loud.
Which are loud, but we're pretty far away from anything at that point. By the time I hit the property line, I don't think you'll be able to hear anything, even though the truck is running if you're around the corner.
Which side are they on? Two ninety-five?
On the two ninety-five side, yes.
In the back?
Yes.
How many feet from the road, Diamond Hill? Estimate.
My estimate is probably about four hundred feet.
Yes, Counselor Martin.
I would believe, looking at the rendition of the shrubbery and trees or whatever we want to say, won't that block a lot as far as what the last question was? As to the community that's on the other side of that?
That's correct. The trees should muffle some of the noise, and also the lights, it's, Mr. Casali didn't get to it yet, but we do intend to put our lights on on poles facing our property so that we don't have light shedding out onto the road and to the other neighbors.
Excuse me, one other question, because we had this in another zoning thing that we had. With the lights, do they have a shield that will be on the lights that'll, so the lights aren't spread, if I'm saying it correctly?
Yeah, the lights will be the dark sky illumination, so the technology will be the dark side sky. So, all of the lighting will just come out of the front head of it, and you won't see any of it wasted up in the front and back.
Thank you very much.
You can sit in the bear's chair there if you want, stay up so you don't have to walk. No, it's right there, sit down right there.
In terms of drainage, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, excuse me, you know, we're a little bit handcuffed in the fact that the site has with it associated an environmental limits restriction. So, we have, in essence, a cap on the entire site, be it a building or pavement, or in this case, it could be a geotextile with about a foot of fill. So, you'll see that any increase in runoff, as well as an improvement in water quality, will be routed through different best management practices, and ultimately, all of the stormwater drains either to a culvert that passes under two ninety-five and/or it sheds off-site. Now, one of the things that we neglected to mention about some of the buffering is, this batuminous specifically in this area is going to be cut sharply into the grade. So, we're going to have about a seven or eight-foot wall in this general area, further diminishing any view shed from the neighbors. Not only will you have the vegetation, and you'll also have some of the stone walls, but you'll also benefit from the topography that'll hide a lot of the operations. Just moving forward, Mr. President, we've been in contact, obviously, with the local fire marshal. This site has both a domestic service and fire protection. You see the continuous fire loop that goes around the site, different yard hydrants and post indicator valves. We're going to have some relocation. We're putting, obviously, buildings on top of existing water lines, and we'll have some movement without... Following up on the sewer, there were some comments initially about some of the sewer. The existing domestic sewer service really kind of hooks up with anything from industrial park, eventually making its way down into the Bay Commission. So, we'll be seeking permits not only from the local Cumberland Sewer Authority, but also subsequent permits from the Narragansett Bay Commission. In terms of permitting process, we obviously received our master plan approval and positive recommendation to the zoning board on both special use permit and dimensional variances. And that's a little bit of a misnomer procedurally, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, as you know, our council can have the authoritative power to grant some of the zoning variances. We have made, out of an abundance of caution, because time is such a constraint for us, we have filed our zoning application. We understand that we may or may not receive approval tonight from this council on the zone change, and furthermore, may or may not receive any zoning variances. We've hedged a little bit, we filed our zoning application. We are scheduled to appear next Wednesday, the eleventh of June, if I may, I'd like to...
What are the variances?
I'd like to quickly go through them. Obviously, we're here tonight for the zone change, specifically, Mr. Chairman, both lot fourteen and three fifty-eight, both of us test this flat twenty-one are in that commercial zone. We're seeking for it to be changed to the industrial I-zone. In terms of the zoning variances, obviously, we have a special use permit for the outdoor storage. Councilman, I think you asked a question, this is the specific area in which we will be bound to have our outdoor storage. And we also have a dimensional variance in the fact that, Mr. President, we cannot plant trees within ten feet of the property line because of the existing parking fields. We are offering, if the council would agree... We are offering, if the council would agree, to put in that row of landscaping, but we would have to do it within the grassed right-of-way.
On Industrial Drive?
On Industrial Drive.
That's not necessary.
We'd be happy to seek and receive the, the variance.
What, and one of the...
It's industrial property, what, we're making it look like, okay, whatever. I'm not the boss there.
So we have one special use permit, that one dimensional variance. We spoke about Cumberland Water, Cumberland Sewer, Bay Commission, we have our RITD's permit with DEM, and both preliminary and final before your plan.
That's right. I, um, I have, I have a land use person here, and I'm going to address the, the issue of the comprehensive plan, which is obviously very important, as well as the zoning relief, again, and probably in closing, I'll make another comment about that, it's not terribly, terrible stretch for the zoning because you've got, again, the parking is pre-existing. The fact that, that we're not ten feet from, from the road...
Do you have less parking that's...
We're just, we're going to be expanding the parking...
So you have more parking than is needed? Or less?
The, the code requires ninety-five, our use requires a hundred and thirteen, we're proposing a hundred and thirteen, in excess of the code, equal to our use.
What would be the purpose of that variant?
It, it's not for the number of spaces.
No, it's, it's because, it's, it's a pre-existent, non-conforming use, since that it's, it's not ten feet off the road. So what happens is any time you make any expansion, technically, you have to revisit, it's an, it's expansion of a pre-existing, non-conforming use, so it already exists. And also, just while we're, on the subject, even the, the special, even the special use permit for outdoor storage, that was really done out of an abundance of caution, sort of a belts and suspenders request, because technically, I believe, under our zoning code, that it's clearly an accessory use to the allowed industrial use. But, Mr., Mr. Pimental, who's the land use person, will address that.
I don't think we need any land use expert. We have the planning board's recommendation. Are there any neighbors here that are going to object? I mean, you could do it if you want, Scott, but...
I mean, if, if you accepted the reports of Mr. Pimental, I believe they've been submitted along with the reports of, of...
Does that satisfy the council?
Satisfy the council, certainly.
Thank you, sir, I don't mean to cut you out of the presentation, but... We've read your report, that's why, you know, it's, it's in the file and, and, is staff to you ask?
Also, I would suggest, based upon Mr. Pimental's experience, that he be accepted as a, an expert witness.
Sure. Is there any objection here in order, in so or?
Are there any questions also? We, even though it hasn't really become an issue in front of this board, the questions haven't involved anything, we do have a traffic person here, we did some minor studies on the traffic.
Reduce traffic.
Exactly.
There are no commercials or storefronts, and can I ask Mr. Casali to come up on the, on the landscaping for a question? Now, have you decided between the berm or the lodged trees?
Yeah, I, you know, when you look at...
Because I can't believe you could do that.
The detrimental aspect, Mr. President, of the berm is you're going to wipe out all the existing vegetation. So, for us, this is, this is, this area...
Oh, that side, yeah.
So you can see how tree this is today, and then that existing parking lot. You know, our prefer, our preference as design professionals would be to take the approach we took today, which is to have our land, our landscape architect evaluate the existing site index and the site inventory, see which trees can stay, which trees need to be thinned out, and if we're short in understory, that's what we'll plant, if we're short in canopy trees, that's where we'll supplement.
Not familiar with a canopy tree?
Well, a canopy tree, just think of a shade tree, something that would bloom like a, and I'm not a landscape architect, but say like Bradford here, or something of a fruit tree.
Is that a large tree?
Yeah, something of, that would have, let's say, an oak or a maple, or something that would give you some type of shade, versus, say, understory, something of a grass or a bush, in that genre.
How, how tall would it take to grow?
Well, you will have, and that is something that is up for discussion, you know, one of the fundamental discussions that I often get into with different planning boards and zoning boards is, my understanding is it's not always the largest tree that will grow the fastest. And I'm going to leave a lot of the specifications up to the landscape architect, specifically the caliber of the tree and the size of the tree, so that we can predict accurately in three to four to five years what this is going to look like. For instance, if we were to come in here and put all eight foot trees, it may not look in the subsequent years as it could look if we planned this correctly.
They might grow too high.
They may, but they may choke each other out for resources and kill each other and not grow at all.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have any questions?
I do. I am interested in the trees in the front of the building, I think that would be wonderful, and a, a great anchor to the front of the industrial park, so thank you.
Now, there's been mention of some sort of ground sign. Is that, is that true?
No.
Yeah, like a sign in the ground, like made of stone or something?
There's mention of a stone wall.
Yes.
Where did I read?
The gateway entrance.
The gateway entrance, yeah.
Yes.
To the industrial park. Do you have a picture of that?
Yes.
You do?
Not of the industrial park. The thought of the entrance was very similar to highlighting the natural stone found...
That wall's going to be there no matter what, what trees you use.
Absolutely.
And is it similar to the one, is there, is there one of those walls, you know, those islands that people landscape around town? Welcome to Cumberland or something?
Like the walls they put across the street from Folsom?
Yeah, on Chapel.
You want the dry stacked quintessential New England, you're getting off a highway there.
That's an excellent, and, you know, people know they're, they're coming to, it's actually going to be good for you because there's not as much traffic on, on the state road, more, more on the interstate. All right, thanks. Counselor Landby, I'm sorry.
I have a question. The current facility on Martin Ave has bobbed wire around it, particularly across the front of the building on Martin Street. So when you drive by, you see bobbed wire in the silos. Obviously, the silos are going to be in the back. I was wondering about bob, the use of bobbed wire, and...
Yeah, I thought we needed you to do that.
And also, the use of bobbed wire, and there was a mention of a wall to the right when you're coming off the highway that's only six feet from the property line. Just wanted to talk about what that wall was going to look like.
If I may...
I didn't see the bobbed wire in, in the, in the presentation.
So, let's, first, I guess we'll start with the wall and then we'll proceed to the bobbed wire. I think the wall that we're talking about is right in this general area, Councilman, that wall, it's going to stop and slowly get to about six or seven feet as it horseshoes around. So when the vehicles come in, you know, we have the bigger trucks come in, they can come in, and then they have to park, and then we need to safely get them out. And so because of the grade, the way it's cutting in, we're going to be cutting into that wall. We're doing a type study now, we started working at it today. If we're going to do some type of segmented block wall, we're going to need some type of anchoring system, and because of the proximity to the property line, it's probably not going to be the best type wall to select. My experience tells me this is going to be a cast-in-place concrete wall, very similar to a foundation, in that we're going to have some commercial steel forms, and we're going to, we're going to pour it as such, we're going to cast and pour it in place.
So when, someone drives by that corner, what are they going to see to their right? A six-foot wall?
No, they would, if they were to be driving by that corner, it would be buried way down in here.
Right.
We would only, that face that's exposed would be for us and us only.
On the inside?
Correct.
And then you'd have your loading docks.
So, in essence, you know, our, when we're coming down, our drive, we're still dropping down and down, and that's why you get that wall in here, and that face is really only facing us.
Okay. What about the bobbed wire?
As you, as you know, Mr. President, the site currently has existing bobbed wire along this southern horseshoe. It was our intent to just extend those limits to about the midway of the proposed building.
So, Ms. Morris, is, is anything, action required on our part if it's already there?
Um, action.
Are they allowed to add to the bobbed wire?
It was my understanding that they are going to ask you. I don't, did you?
We have not filed.
I have not filed.
Well, that's a separate...
Yeah, it's a separate, you'll consider that separately.
All right, no problem, we did one of those recently for...
We understand it's a council action, we have not filed.
It's a strange ordinance, but we have...
Mr. Sil, let me address that, please, Mr. Landby, if that's okay.
As you guys know, we're, our, our primary conductor at this operation is copper. And we've had multiple break-ins at our location in Martin Street, multiple.
Really?
Oh, yeah, we, we've increased the security, we've, we've got cameras out, we just arrested two individuals just this week. It's a problem in, in all our locations because of the nature of our product, and people are stealing it, three dollars and fifty cents a pound. So, you know, could we, could we live without it? Yeah?
The bobbed wire is not an issue, it's over there. Now, is there a building in this photograph next to the slot, Mr. Park?
I'm sorry?
Is there a building next to the slot?
You mean to the...
To the east of it, yeah.
Yes.
What building is that? That building, yeah.
It's thirty, yeah, I just know the address, thirty-five Industrial.
Could I, could I address?
Yes.
It's thirty-five Industrial Road, and the owner is right here.
What is there? What is there there?
Why don't you ask him?
The owner's here?
Yeah, we've had, in all candor, we had some discussions with Mr. Wignall, looking toward acquiring his building, and they didn't work out, but that doesn't mean that we don't have an excellent relationship.
Well, that's all right.
So, Mr. Wignall might...
He's the owner of it, so if he decides, is there a business there?
Yes, sir.
All right, so if for some reason that business relocates or doesn't make it, you have an option now to utilize your property in a different way? If you want to. Let me ask, is, is there anyone else in favor of the petition? Or against? Sir, come up with, and please turn around and raise your right hand.
The testimony that you're about to give, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Donald Wignall. I live at eighty Fisher Road in Cumberland.
Okay.
Lifelong resident of Cumberland. The building at thirty-five Industrial, in our business, we buy commercial industrial property and we sublet it.
Okay.
So it's not my business that's in there, it's, we have a warehouse for, actually a metals company in Lincoln that's in there, we have a company that produces or, and warehouses religious articles, and a daycare center.
A daycare?
And then we do various warehousing.
Okay. The daycare center, does it, service mostly the workers that work in these facilities?
Um, no, it's actually people through the town. A town bus shows up there every morning.
All right, do you have any thoughts on the project? I understand the current building's kind of in disrepair. I understand the current building's kind of in disrepair, would that be true?
Um, yes.
So, are you in favor of this petition?
Oh, absolutely in favor of this. I mean, I've walked through, we own almost a million square feet of space, and we bought all of our space from companies that are closing down and leaving Rhode Island. So when you walk through a facility and you see it closed down, it's kind of a, kind of a bad thing for a Rhode Islander to see. And this is just exciting to, to see this going on. One other thing I can add to, to this, they didn't ask me to come here, I came on my own accord. I've had the pleasure of walking through their facility with them when we were early on talking about purchasing my facility for their use. And I can say that the, the camaraderie I saw between the employees and the executives, everyone knew, how's your family, how's this guy, that, there really was a good, a good feeling of an employee management relationship with this company. I was very impressed, to tell you the truth.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else speak against or in favor? Declare the public hearing closed at nine thirty. You're a town employee, you can speak anytime. Sure.
I had a question. Before we close?
Of who?
Uh, one of the owners, who returned.
Reopen the public hearing at nine thirty.
Perhaps this isn't a hundred percent germane to the decision, but the retailers who are going to be affected here...
Evicted, you mean?
Have we given them assistance in relocating, or have we done anything to help them out?
Mr. Schmidt, if I might ask them to respond directly to you?
I understand the convenience store is no longer there.
Yes, but you, you should know, the convenience store difficulties existed long before...
Yes, yes, we know that.
We're not responsible.
Are you a representative from Mr. Hassiotis?
No.
No, sir. I own a business that mall is being taken down.
All right, come forward, Steve.
The whole truth and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it. State your name for the record.
Michael Leo Anthony Hooley, H-O-U-L-E, one-one-six Harris Pond Road, Blackstone, Mass.
Okay, what, do you have a watch company, is that it?
No, I own the coffee breaks. This council afforded my wife and I an opportunity last, about eight months ago to open a business, been very successful.
Okay.
And I wanted to thank you all before I even testified.
You're welcome.
You people are the writing book on business, because I'll tell you something, I've had a positive, a hundred percent positive experience on this town. Police, fire, your building inspectors, your inspection divisions, the city clerk's office, a hundred percent positive, I want to thank you for that.
Well, that's cool. Thank you very much. So, have you found another location?
We, my wife and I, about three weeks ago, we had a gentleman walk into our, our store. Mr. Dodge walked in and didn't know who he was, identified himself as a representative of the Okanite Company. In all honesty, I'd never heard of him, I thought it was a Japanese steakhouse, that's not why they buy a store. That's the truth. Then I realized it was a wire company, and Mr. Dodge says you need to call New Jersey. I'm a retired police officer, New Jersey, Giuliano, let me tell you why, it's not good, it's not good. So I gave Mr. Giuliano a phone call, and it was like a Sopranos episode. Nice gentleman. I worked in Wunsaka for thirty years, so I saw CVS grow from its inception. And I remember when CVS was a hometown, they knew who you were, office parties, picnics. My impression of Okanite is exactly that thirty years ago. They care about this town, they care about their employees. The first thing Mr. Giuliano said to me is, "We're not here to walk over you, we want to make sure that you're taken care of and you're all set. This company is A number one. It's my opinion as an outsider, I have no horse in this race. This company, in this town, is a home run. It's grand slam." And I would respectfully ask that you approve this, Mike, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
If, the lawyer and me might come out just for a second. Mr. Schmidt asked a question that wasn't answered.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just say yes or no.
Sure.
Did you receive any assistance from the Okanite Company in connection with moving? Yes or no?
Yes, I did.
And where are you going to be?
Right now, we haven't made any decisions on going anywhere, there's a few parameters that we need for our business, but Okanite's been behind us one hundred and ten percent.
All right, well, good luck.
Thank you very much.
We're not going to hurt anybody.
Let the truth, so hope you got it. State your name, please, for the record.
It comes off, but...
I'm Barbara Eno, and I'm the owner of Here It Is, which is in the property. I'm not as talkative as Mike is, but I just want to say, yes, Frank, he has been very cooperative. I haven't found a relocation yet, but he's helped me all the way, and as soon as I do, I'll let the Valley Breeze know, I'll let everybody know where I'm going. My business is not closing, I know there's been a lot of rumors and such, but if anything, my business will continue because of Okanite. And I appreciate that.
Counselor Martin?
I would, I know Kelly, you've been working on some of this also?
Well, yeah, as a background, yes.
Okay, and I would hope that something like this, especially, I happen to know your mother very well, and she's...
Everybody does.
She's threatened me, but we would love to have you stay in Cumberland.
I'm keeping all my options open right now.
I'm keeping all my options open right now.
I hope you do, and...
I do, it's all for your business.
I'm so happy to hear that both parties, our committee director and Okanite is helping you.
Yes, they are.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a watch company in there, too?
They're not, they're not here tonight.
All right, so, all right, one last time, is there anyone else which speak in favor or against? I'll declare the public hearing closed at nine thirty-six P.M. Corrector Morris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. You know, the planning board did give you a positive recommendation. The two things I just wanted to talk about quickly are the zoning issues and the remaining process that Okanite has to go through. With regard, you have approved conditions in the past relating to zoning relief. The ordinance is drafted such that you would be giving relief, notwithstanding the provisions, which is totally, you know, you're authorized to do that. We, as, you know, in the administration, has worked really hard over the past several months with Okanite, and, you know, I know that all of you are very pro-business, and I think that, you know, requiring them to go through another process that could cause, you know, I mean, unlikely, but there's an appeal process and things like that, I would, I would request that you include the zoning issues in, in the ordinance. And then the only other thing I wanted to talk about is the planning board still has another level of review, and both the planning board and I are very sensitive to what this is going to look like from people traveling on Diamond Hill Road. I mean, as long as I've been back in Cumberland owning my property, which is just north of this, I've been looking at that site hoping that we could have a real entrance to that industrial park. Okanite has agreed to provide a signage that will actually identify that as an industrial park. I think the street trees are really important, because you want to have like a boulevard going into Okanite, so I would take their offer to plant trees in, in the sidewalk or in the grassy area. But I want you to be assured that it's very important to me and the planning board that the buffer from across the street and even people driving on Diamond Hill Road is adequate and substantial. So, I know that's a concern of yours, and I just want you to be assured that it is a concern of mine. I am a hundred and twenty percent in favor of this project, we're going to keep all those jobs here, we're going to have the longevity of Okanite staying here for many, many years to come. I think it's a fabulous, it's smart growth, you know, we talk about all these buzzwords and planning, but I want you to understand, and they know, that I am very concerned about what that's going to look like from the, from Diamond Hill Road.
What is the dimensional variance, is it only parking?
It's not, it's not even parking, it's the, the buffer between parking and the street, but what they want to do is, instead of having that vegetated buffer...
Do they have a code number we should use?
Do you have the code number? It's within the ordinance.
It is?
You got it?
What section? Which one should I be looking at, the first one or the second one?
Let's write this, section fourteen point two.
Fourteen?
Point two, parking space dimension in construction, no parking space shall be less than ten feet from any front yard line.
Fourteen point two, you said?
Uh, ten.
What is it again?
Well, it's, uh...
Fourteen point two, that's the zone code, or is that it?
No, it's, it's in the section.
Of the petition? Hold on.
It's on page one of the ordinance, there's, I think there's four things they're asking for.
Section fourteen dash two B.
Two B, right.
The zone change position is, is oh nine? I don't know, you said everything's in that, all the requests are in that?
The requests are in the...
The ordinance fourteen oh nine?
Yes.
What is the comprehensive map change involved?
It's just a, it's a land use, I don't want to say just, but it's a land use designation. I think there's a slide...
So, all we have to do is add one to say, we're going to rezone it from...
It's not rezoning it, it's, it's redesignating that area from commercial to industrial. And it's, and it's merely an extension of the existing industrial designation.
Yeah, it would be assessors plot twenty on lots fourteen and thirty-three fifty-eight.
Correct, and that's, I think, ordinance fourteen oh eight?
All right.
A.
I'd like to take a motion to grant ordinance fourteen oh eight A, which changes the use of assessors plot, is that what designate?
The land use designation.
The land use designation of assessors plot twenty-one lots fourteen and three fifty-eight to industrial, oh, one, industrial one.
Industrial.
Oh, to industrial. Counselor Kearns moves the motion, seconded by Counselor Murray, is there any discussion? Harry Nunn Rokov, Counselor Schmidt.
Yes.
Counselor Kearns.
Yes.
Counselor DeCosta.
Yes.
Counselor Murray.
Absolutely.
Counselor Lambie.
Yes.
Counselor Dwyer.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that ordinance passes seven to nothing.
Question, Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Kearns.
Question for Ms. Kelly.
Kelly Morris?
You express concern about berm, given the fact that there's an agreement to provide the berm and its visual appearance, what is your concern?
I'm, I'm not concerned about it, there, there were two renderings that they showed you tonight. I, you know, obviously, Mr. Casali is an engineer, and he's got a landscape architect, so there's issues about the grading and, and how that would work with a berm, and maybe it would work better with the stone wall and the trees.
So, it's an unknown right now?
It's an unknown, and I want you to be assured that the planning board will...
Will be on top of it.
On top of it, and make sure that the trees are mature enough, you know, I, Mr. Casali said maybe, maybe certain trees wouldn't work, but we will work with them, I want you to just be assured of that.
You indicated as a condition, you want a substantial boundary, is that what you said?
Sure.
No, you said...
No, I think that you can just refer...
Do we have to add that as a condition of granting the zone change, or will the planning board take care of that?
Well, we will take care of it, and you can also refer that berm issue to the planning board, but they will take care of it anyway.
Mr. President?
Counselor Murray?
I'm, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with you handling it through the planning board, just from what I've heard tonight, and earlier today, I happened to meet with some of the Okanite people, that I feel very comfortable in what they want to do, and they certainly presented it tonight, to, and I was especially impressed of how they dealt with the, the people that were in the stores there, because that was an issue originally, and I think that was a big block, so I, I'm, I'm very comfortable, and I hope the rest of the council people are.
And also, just so you know, I mean, they've met with the neighbors, the neighbors were at the planning board meeting, I don't see, I, I don't see any of the neighbors here tonight, so, I mean, I think that they, you know, obviously, they're, they're very reputable and...
Okay.
I was more, Miss, you know, Councilman Lambie was talking about that a lot, I want him and all of you to be comfortable with the fact that we're, you know, the planning board will be on it, on, you know.
All right, Counselor Schmidt?
Well, along those, along that line, is it possible to make the zone change subject to an approval, or is this implied with what we're doing?
No, I would, I would suggest that somebody make a motion to approve ordinance fourteen oh nine with the final landscaping being subject to planning board approval.
And, and just, just to answer, Councilman Schmidt?
Everything else is in there.
Everything is conditional, this is a conditional zone change. It's conditioned on approval of preliminary plan.
I thought that was already granted.
No, master plan was granted.
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Kearns moves that motion on ordinance fourteen oh nine, seconded by Counselors DeCosta, Murray.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Are you following our fourteen oh nine?
Yes.
I left a couple of suggestions as amendments, section five...
Hold on.
These were revolved about the change of ownership today. Section five should be...
You already amended the petitions orally, do we have to amend them, we as a council have to amend them?
I would just suggest, section five, the ordinance shall take effect upon passage.
Oh.
The deeds are already recorded, strike that, the rest of the language from immediately to where it says designate, so it should say this ordinance shall become effective upon passage, any ordinance or portions of the ordinance is inconsistent here with, hereby repealed.
Counselor Kearns moves to amend the ordinance zero, fourteen, oh nine in section five by inserting after the word upon...
Passage.
The words passage, by inserting a period thereafter, by deleting the words recording of a deed or deeds in the land evidence records of the town of Cumberland transferring the fee ownership of the town of Cumberland, tax assessors plot twenty-one, comma, lot fourteen, comma, in town of Cumberland, Texas, tax assessors plot twenty-one, lot four, three fifty-eight, to the Okanite Company or its duly authorized designate, period. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor DeCosta, on the amendment to the ordinance, is there any discussion? Hearing none in favor?
Aye.
Those against, that passes seven, nothing. On the ordinance, as amended, there's been a motion and a second, subject to landscaping being subject to final planning board approval. Any further discussion? Rokov, vote, Counselor Schmidt.
Yes.
Counselor Kearns.
Yes.
Counselor DeCosta.
Yes.
Counselor Murray.
Yes.
Counselor Lambie.
Yes.
Counselor Dwyer.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the ordinance passes seven to nothing. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
The council will take a five-minute recess. Counsel will take a five-minute recess. Much. The next ordinance in order for business is ordinance fourteen ten. This is the second and final vote. There will be no public hearing. Counsel Dwyer.
Make a motion to approve.
Counsel Dwyer moves to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by Counsel Murray and Kearns. Discussion. Counselor Schmidt.
Just wanted to, uh, wanted to go over something we spoke about the other day that I failed to mention on Monday. Uh, we talked about utilizing a portion of that line item capital improvements for Great Woods. And I, is it just something you wanted to mention here and we're all set or?
Well, I said on that, I told you on the phone I'd reserve twenty thousand. We'll do that.
Thank you.
Further discussion, Counselor Lambie.
Yes, again, I wanted to clarify for the record, uh, based on our discussions the other evening. Um, I have some concerns with this budget, um, relative to the, um, the OPEB expense, the health insurance expense not being, um, funded adequately. I, I believe there is a significant underfunding or expense that has not been budgeted for that line item. Um, I was encouraging this council, um, and the mayor to amend the budget to reduce another expense, not increase taxes, but to reduce another expense called school capital purchases by an amount of six hundred and fifty thousand. And I also propose an expense reimbursement, uh, reduction for a school grant for a hundred thousand dollars for a total of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. An amount that, um, I, uh, based on information we have on page five of this ordinance, um, uh, we appear to be short on another expense line. So again, I, my amendments were to reduce, uh, one expense so that we could properly fund another expense. My, my proposal had, uh, in, in no way, shape or form, um, any ties to tax increases. However, the fact that we have not reduced these expenses this year and, um, have agreed through a first vote to fund what was explained by Superintendent Thornton as a follow-on investment in computers when the fifth graders move up to middle school next year. We have basically built into our budget, um, um, additional expenses that we will need to tax for as a council next year. So again.
Further discussion. Counselor, mayor? Yeah, there's something.
I figured that the discussion happened last night, but, the other night, but I think you need, I'll give you the thirty-second version here, but I totally disagree with what was just said. Uh, this budget is a good budget. Uh, you don't fund, uh, long-term, uh, expenses with, with one-time revenue sources. And, uh, and quite frankly, you don't, uh, I don't believe that you micromanage the school department, which is managed well. And so I repeat that just so that, uh, anybody who's watching this tape understands that this is a, uh, this budget that was approved, uh, in a first vote on Monday night is a very good budget. It's a zero tax increase. And yet it, it does, um, speak to a lot of the needs in the, in the, in the community. And, um, at some point in time, uh, you know, if you want to fully fund that OPEB, uh, it may require a, a tax increase and it may make sense to do that. But I also would remind the community that, uh, you know, Counsel Lambie was calling for a four million dollar cash infusion into that account just three years ago. And if we did that, we would have been overtaxing the people at Town of Cumberland by two and a half million dollars for the last three years because we know that it's going to be significantly less than what was advocated for at that podium three years ago. So this is a good budget. I stand by it. I can manage it. I appreciate the council, um, moving it forward tonight and we'll do a good job managing as we have in the past.
Further discussion, hearing none. Roll call vote, Counsel Dwyer.
Yes.
Counsel Lambie.
No.
Counsel Murray.
Yes.
Counsel DeCosta.
Yes.
Counselor Kearns.
Yes.
Counselor Schmidt.
No.
Chair votes yes. The ordinance passes five to two. Ordinance fourteen eleven, establishing the sewer budget for the fiscal year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. Final vote, Counsel Dwyer.
Make a motion to approve.
Moves to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kearns. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Counselor Schmidt.
Yes.
Counselor Kearns.
Yes.
Counselor DeCosta.
Yes.
Counsel Murray.
Yes.
Counsel Lambie.
Yes.
Counsel Dwyer.
Yes.
The chair votes yes. The motion carries seven to nothing. Ordinance fourteen twelve, establishing the water budget for the fiscal year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. Final vote, Counsel Dwyer.
Make a motion to approve.
Moves to approve. Seconded by Counselors Murray and Kearns. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Counsel Dwyer.
Yes.
Counsel Lambie.
Yes.
Counsel Murray.
Yes.
Counsel DeCosta.
Yes.
Counselor Kearns.
Yes.
Counselor Schmidt.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries seven to nothing. Ordinance fourteen thirteen, establishing the Parks and Recreation Budget for the fiscal year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. Counsel Dwyer.
Make a motion to approve.
Counsel Dwyer moves to approve. Seconded by
Second.
Counsel DeCosta and Kearns. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, roll call vote. Counsel Schmidt.
Yes.
Counselor Kearns.
Yes.
Counsel DeCosta.
Yes.
Counsel Murray.
Yes.
Counsel Lambie.
Yes.
Counsel Dwyer.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. And the ordinance passes four, seven to nothing. Ordinance fourteen dash fourteen A, in order to amending the executive staff salary. Counsel Dwyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Subcommittee met this evening and voted to recommend approval to the full council on a vote of three to nothing.
Three to nothing.
Yes, sir.
Counsel Dwyer moves to, is this an ordinance?
Yes, it is.
Declare the public hearing open. Has it been advertised for public hearing? At ten oh four P M, does anyone wish to speak in favor or against? Declare the public hearing closed at ten oh five. Does this include the town sergeant?
Yes, it does.
Did you give him a raise this time?
He, there is one proposed if it passes.
All right. I don't want to, I want to make sure he's happy this time.
I don't know whether he's happy or not.
Can we have discussion on this?
Uh, yeah, when somebody makes a motion to approve, we'll have discussion.
Motion to approve.
Counselor, uh, Kearns makes a motion to approve. The ordinance seconded by Counsel Dwyer. Discussion, Counsel Murray.
We're already. Well, I'd like, I'd just like to say that the sergeant who's been here for forty-two years.
No, he hasn't.
Oh, okay, forty-one, forty-one years has done an outstanding job and I can't believe that he didn't get a raise last year. So I really.
Don't make fun of him. He'll get mad at us.
Mr. President. I'm trying to. But, uh, I, I'll let it go.
Mr. President.
Counsel Lambie.
Uh, I do have a, a point I want to make for anyone who, uh, is watching this evening or also takes a look at this ordinance online. Um, the town, although the total, uh, salary line has increased just a bit in relative terms as a percentage, um, year over year, uh, two thousand and fifteen versus two thousand and fourteen, there was about a ninety thousand dollar increase in total for a two-year period. Um, and it's difficult, um, to make the analysis. We spoke, we spoke in detail at it earlier this evening, but I do want to point out that the tax.
Ninety thousand?
Ninety thousand dollars in total of two thousand and three to two thousand and fifteen. However, um, I do want to point out that the town has realized about ninety thousand dollars in savings based on, um, placings, uh, these employees into the health savings account. So, uh, really, uh, over a two-year period, I, I feel the town has done a, a, a great job of managing, um, its finances relative to payroll and benefits for this group.
Very well. Further discussion.
Mr. President.
Counsel Dwyer.
I, I think that what Counsel Lambie was just referring to was just a little bit inaccurate because the, uh, the ninety thousand dollars represents some added, um, slots that we just hadn't put in there before. So in actuality, the budget difference between the budgeted figure from, for the last two years, the difference is, Brian, you've got that mic page in front of you. I'm sorry, what is the, just read off those, column number two and column number four. If you'd be so kind.
Roughly fourteen thousand. It's a change from one million, six hundred and one thousand, eight ninety-nine to one million, six hundred and fifteen thousand, nine oh two.
So in fact, that's the difference in the, yeah, not ninety thousand dollars. The other columns that he's referring to are positions that were already in there, that had just been, uh, omitted from previous executive salary lines. So it really isn't, I, I don't want anybody to think that we just all of a sudden increased everybody's salary by ninety thousand dollars. That's about as far from the truth as, as you can get. So in fact, it's only, uh, um.
And you'll, also, we put a line in on the back column that shows what, uh, this budget is. So that's the actual cost that's laid into this, into this, in this budget. And the.
The Jamaican seven salary eighty-three thousand, you only have seventy-two in the budget to pay it?
That's correct.
Why?
Well, because we have a, a public works director that, uh, right now is not working full-time.
Okay.
Okay, and the same thing in the tax assessor. And you, that's why, um, I appreciate the fact that, that, uh, you know, it was noted that we're managing well. And, uh, that's part of the management to maintain the, uh, the cost, uh, in a way that, um, as you heard at the podium, uh, where we're delivering, uh, the services that, uh, at least was appreciated by one businessperson tonight.
Further discussion. Roll call vote, Counsel Dwyer.
Yes.
Counsel Lambie.
Yes.
Counsel Murray.
Yes.
Counsel DeCosta.
Yes.
Counselor Kearns.
Yes.
Counsel Schmidt.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Ordinance passes seven to nothing. New business. Uh, do you mind if we do the school department first? Fourteen twenty-three. Do we have anybody here that's involved in these others, mayor? The resolutions? No, but I mean, you, you're staying till the end, I assume. And you don't have any department heads like Mr. Stoick or anybody here?
No, no, I can, I can speak to that.
All right. So we'll do resolution fourteen twenty-three. Authorizing the purchase installation of equipment for the Cumberland School Department pursuant to an energy saving contract, which is, they've got as a E S C O because it's a school department purchase. It has to have an acronym. And the financing thereof in an amount not to exceed one point eight million dollars through a tax-exempt lease purchase agreement and authorization, the execution and delivery of a tax-exempt lease purchase agreement, equipment schedule and all related instruments and determining other matters in connection therewith. Is that even a sentence? I mean.
Doesn't come up as spell check.
I don't think this came from Mr. Heffron. This ordinance must have came from outside. Mr. Sylvia?
Bond counsel, that was from Ellen Cornow, Moses Alfonso.
Bond counsel?
Yes.
Okay. I'm curious as to why bond counsel's involved.
Well, just because of the master lease. They, they prepared it.
Is there a bond involved in this?
No. Borrowing.
Go ahead. Who's doing this? I, I don't understand this whole thing. I've already told Mr. Pregnado, so he's aware of. And they, they, how long before the finance committee did you meet?
Excuse me?
How long before the finance committees? What time did that meeting start?
Uh, actually, we, we had just a little over a half hour, I think. And, and we started to get into some detail and, and quite honestly, what we did, because we brushed up against, uh, timeline, we, uh, we actually adjourned and had, with no recommendation for the, for the full council at that point because we really didn't get through it. So, so I said to Mr.
That was, you started at six?
No, six, well, we started at six, but we had some other items on the agenda.
Try to clarify for me what is happening here, Mr. Pregnado.
Okay, well, uh, thank you for, uh, having us here tonight. Appreciate it, uh, scheduling us so quickly. And the reason we wanted to be here as soon as possible is because if we go forward with this project, this work all has to be done in the summer. Um, what we did, if, if you recall, that some of the council members, I don't remember which ones, but we made a presentation earlier this year, maybe three or four months ago, three months ago. We were here, we were here with a different vendor and we went through the concept of how this works. Basically, basically what we would do is borrow this up to a million eight dollars. We, since the school department doesn't have the authority to borrow, we need the town council to be our conduit. So you would, we would borrow the million eight and we would repay that or substantially pay for most of that over either a ten or fifteen-year period. Now, if we went fifteen years, there would be, it would be vanilla, it would be no cost each year. But I prefer to do ten years because things, you know, I just wouldn't want to commit to a fifteen-year bar, uh, fifteen-year lease. Technology changes, things get old, you know, you know, I don't want to be paying for stuff after their useful life. So we would try to do it over ten years. And so the savings may be a little bit less than what the cost of the, of the borrowing will be, um, possibly. It depends on how we structure it because the million eight that's before you doesn't include the rebates and stuff that we also think will, we'll be able to get through national grid and others. So that's why it's up to a million. If we get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in rebates, we could either use that money for further work down the road or we could borrow less money and make the debt service and the savings from the, and, and utility costs balance out more. But this will be on the school department side of the budget at this point anyhow. So, um, we just, like I said, need the, uh, council to be our conduit. Um, what we ended up doing is we, we had Siemens in here, but what we learned as we were going through the study, looking at our buildings, there's a company, E N E Systems. Mr. Murphy's with me tonight. He'll, he'll take you through the project in a minute. Um, three of our schools already have energy management systems in place that were installed by this company years ago. Somewhere along the line, long before anyone that works at the school department now, um, these systems were put in and, and they were never maintained and they fell into disrepair. So they haven't been used in a number of years. But the proprietary, you know, uh, management system and wiring and stuff is all complete. So having three of our eight schools already with energy management systems in from this vendor, it made sense to. Um, also, we went out for a request for qualifications and we measured this company against Siemens and they were, they were much cheaper, smaller company without as much overhead. So between that and the fact that three systems are in place, you know, the school committee is, um, looking to award this to E N E, um, if we get funding for the project. And, and just for council people who weren't there, the concept basically is we borrow this money. We would bring in the equipment we need to drive down utility costs. And the savings from the utilities would be the freed-up money to pay them. So instead of taking that out of the budget and just reducing the budget by that hundred and fifty-something thousand dollars, you'd use that hundred and fifty thousand towards the repayment of the lease. So it'd be a way to get this equipment where the school department has no access right now to capital funds. There's no bond issuer, you know, on the immediate horizon, though at some point we hope there will be. So, um, uh, you know, I'll let Paul go into this in detail.
Where, where are we getting the money?
You'll go up.
Alex, can you come up and explain this process to me? Are we borrowing money? Brian, I'm sorry. Thank you, Alex.
Uh, we will be entering into a master lease.
How does that produce money? He's talking about one point eight million dollars.
Yes.
But we have to buy equipment, he's saying.
Yes.
How much is that going to cost?
Uh, one point.
One point eight million?
Yes.
How are we going to buy the equipment?
We're getting a loan.
Right. Basically, the master lease.
The master lease is a loan.
It's a loan.
It's a tax-exempt loan.
Yes.
No upfront money?
No.
No, that you'll probably have an interest rate of in the low, somewhere in the mid-twos.
Yes.
So it's a very cheap way to finance a project like this.
Wow. They do this for everything, huh? How do they make any money?
Is that the leasing company?
Two percent juice. I mean, all right. Thank you, Brian.
So anyhow, I'll, I'll, I'll turn it, what we did is, um,
You're right, Mark.
As you recall. Well, we came before, you must have insulted me, Mark. Uh, when we came before you last time, we talked about, um, how we had looked at this at all our schools at like a hundred thousand-foot level to see what, how we might, uh, what type of project we'd put together. What E N E now has come in and they've done the really, the nitty-gritty detail of their audit to identify the real energy savings and what we would do first. The total of this project's about six point seven million dollars, which we would do over probably four phases. With the first phase being the one that we would save the most in utility costs to pay for it. And then we would hope to, as years go on, roll out other, other, uh, key, key pieces.
Is there a line in, um, your budget and in ours? When is this master lease expected to be entered into?
Um, we would want to enter into it sometime this summer.
When would the payments begin?
A year from now.
So we don't need anything in this year's budget? So now, how are we to guarantee? So, how are we to guarantee that the school department is going to pay us or the lease?
Well, you ultimately have the control of, of, um, the appropriation that you send us, the town appropriation. So what happens now for many things like legal, like, uh, medical claims, for example, you know, medical claims are paid through, are paid through your, your account, the money's put up, and it's a, it's a due-to, due-from. So you reduce, uh, you reduce your appropriation to us by those medical claims, so you, you actually, the money comes to you first, so.
All right.
Mr. President?
No. Counsel Brian?
Um, I'm sorry, also on that point, the town will be entering into a sublease with the school department on this project.
All right.
Which is also included, uh, in the back of the package.
Um, is there a mechanism in here that guarantees any actual savings go towards paying the debt? Because-
In the resolution?
In the resolution. Because if you realize savings at a hundred thousand dollars a year, and it goes into your general pool, you can do anything you want with that money. I think any savings generated by this ordinance or resolution should go directly to debt service.
All of it, or?
Well, the, the sublease-
To meet the payment.
The sublease that, that Brian's talking about is gonna be a lease that we're gonna pay the amount of the debt service each year, so whether we use the savings from utilities to buy books or whatever, we, we're gonna be responsible for having that two-hundred-thousand dollars in our budget to make a payment to the town for that lease, so, however you wanna.
My follow-up question to that is, what's the, to the finance committee, what's one-point-eight million dollars in terms of debt service in next year's budget?
The debt ser, the debt service on the one-point, well, it's up to one-point-eight. So we don't know how we're gonna, for example-
You're gonna borrow it all at once?
Well, w, well, yeah, we'll borrow it all at once. Well, we'll buy, well-
That's, that's only for the first phase, that.
Yeah, I mean, we'll spend this, we'll spend this one-point-eight million by October, November. Because the first phase is to do energy management systems in all the, all the schools, so that we could control all the things that run twenty-four hours a day, that nothing, never gets turned off, fans and things like that.
Lights.
Exactly. And, um, and to do the two worst boiler situations we have in the district, which are North Cumberland Middle School and the trans building at the high school, where the boilers, uh, you know, run to, you know, just run constantly, there's no, there's no turning them off. And so those, those are the two worst areas we have, where we see the biggest savings.
Mayor?
Yes, and I, I wanna, um, state that we've had several meetings, and that one of the things that is going to be layered into the contract is a guarantee for savings that, um, you know, that, that pays for virtually all of the, the majority of the debt service. So I wanted to make sure that that was in writing, and that, that would be, uh, reduce the risk to, um, to a very low level. Uh, so I think that it's a, it's a good thoughtful strategy on energy conservation. I also, as has been explained to me, it's also a, um, in some cases, a safety issue, in some cases, it's also a, um, a, you know, comfort issue, and yet it's, it's a wash. And the other thing that I would point out on the finance side is that the school department does, uh, and that's the reason that I, um, spoke to a few meetings ago, was that the building committee being established puts us in a position so that the school department can get reimbursed on this project that only continues, adds into the viability of it. So it's a, I, I, I support it from the point of view of safety, and I, I, I think that the school department will have to have it approved by the school committee, uh, and subject to that contract, um, you know, showing that the savings were guaranteed to the, to the school department, and that, that's the safety net, I believe, that the town has, and they can speak-
What do you, what do you envision the building committee's duties to be, Mayor, in this project?
Well, I think it's, I don't think it's gonna be a long-term, as, as, as Alex just spoke to, but I think that it's, just to make sure that, uh, the project, uh, the monies are spent, uh, in a way that the, that, that committee, um, can approve, that meets the standard of, of the presentation, I, I think that that's important. And then, um, but I, I do, I do want to say that the savings being guaranteed, uh, in a way in the contract, and I just wanted to speak to that publicly, so that, uh, that in fact happens. That's what I've been told is gonna happen, and I, I have no reason to believe that that's not gonna happen.
There are, there are a couple of things, but Council of Commons asked a question, and it was answered. I think you asked what the debt service might be on a one-point-eight million. The debt service on that would be approximately two-hundred-five thousand dollars a year. But we, we may structure it different, because the project that we have at one-point-eight million has just some estimates in for, for rebates, it doesn't have, it, that, that's before rebates and stuff like that, so if we wanna, if our savings are a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, and the debt service is two-oh-five, well, maybe we take some of those rebates, instead of doing extras, some additional work, maybe we bring the size of the project down to a million-six, so that the debt service is maybe more, more like one-eighty to one-fifty-five or so, you know what I mean? So we could, we have some things that we wanna be up to one-million-eight, 'cause we don't yet know what our rebates and stuff will be. We haven't gone forward with that, because there's an awful lot in the applications for those rebates, and it didn't make sense to do that if in fact the project wasn't gonna be funded. We would just look like, you know, really foolish with National Grid and other people. So we wanted to come here first, and that'll be the first thing we'll work on if this is approved, you know, starting tomorrow.
Where'd you come up with the number, one-point-eight?
That was, what we did is, we examined about, we examined, you know, all the energy needs and stuff that we feel we have in the district, and they're now included in an updated F cap that the building committee will get, as well as, um, the council and mayor. The one-point-eight million dollars of, is, is the amount of money we need to do all the energy management systems and those two worst boilers. And we, and we figured that one-point-eight million, or some amount up to that, could be supported by the utility savings.
How, how-
Within a few, you know, within-
Did the school department itself determine that?
Will determine what?
What needed to be purchased or done?
The, the school department through E N E Systems will determine what the, what the-
Who's E N A Systems?
That's the, that's the company that Mr. Murphy's here with, the company that we're gonna select to do this work.
Who's hiring them?
School committee.
So is that a separate expense from the one-point-eight?
No. No.
So the school, we're authorizing the lease, and the school committee's hiring the peo, that doesn't make, that doesn't go, that's not the way it works. We, if we pay, we hire, no?
You're not paying. There's gonna, there's gonna be a sublease that you just heard, that's gonna require the school department to repay you the, the cost of the debt service.
It's a master lease that we're gonna be responsible for.
And a sublease between the city, uh, between the town and the school department.
And they allow that sublease?
Yes, yes, and also, I, I believe-
But there's no bond involved in there or anything?
I believe if, if we were the ones hiring, we would not be eligible for the forty percent reimbursement.
Right.
Also.
The, the school aid, the school reimbursement, the forty percent reimbursement, has to be a school project. The big reason that we need a building committee, because, believe me, I believe E N E Systems will not need me, Ryan Silva, Mark Fiorillo, to tell them how to do the project.
Or the building committee.
That, well, those are building committee members, is what I'm saying, like Phil Thornton's gonna put me on, Brian's been mentioned as being going on, Mark Fiorillo's gonna be the school representative, but what RIDE requires is that a building committee be in place, so that when you submit your, the, the phase-one application for projects, this project and other work that we'll need to do over the next five years that we want to get reimbursed on, you have to have a building committee in place. Without the building committee, no reimbursement of forty percent.
Council Murray?
On that guarant, that guarantee is a hundred-and-fifty thousand?
Hundred-and-fifty, just about a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, Councilman.
That, they are going to guarantee, as you've told us, on the finance committee.
Yes, and I'll, I'll, Mr. Murphy, why don't you explain exactly the method that is used to, so that people are comfortable that there's not gonna be a, an argument that it was saved or not saved?
All right, now, I'm, I'm very happy to be here, appreciate you inviting me in. E N E Systems was selected through an RFQ process.
The what?
In the RFQ process, um, in order to be selected, we had to, uh, provide open-book pricing, um, that we would use when we went to finding, uh, firm fixed prices. We also had to, um, inform the school district what we would charge them if a project did not go ahead, and we spent funds developing a project. So all that was resolved and put in our request for qualifications, which we submitted, and were selected by the school department.
What was the process you, you said you were selected on?
Request for qualifications.
What is that? A request for qualifications? Where does that appear in the general laws? A request for qualifications? Mr. Heffron.
I, I'm sorry, I was, I was looking at something, I didn't listen to you.
He says he was, he's gonna be recommended to be hired, I guess, by the school department, they haven't voted yet, right? Under a process called a request for qualifications.
Not aware of it.
It, it's a method of qualifying people to do work for you. The school department is, is under no-
There's two ways that you-
The school, the school department, or, nor any company that wanted to do this, well, you know, any city or town, is under no, um, no need to go out to bid for this type of project, because there's a state bid list that includes ten or eleven pre-selected vendors that the state has qualified.
Is he on the list?
Absolutely.
Well, that's how he's getting hired, then.
Exactly. And, and we chose them over the others because of the three management systems they already have in place in the district. It didn't make sense to rip out systems in place and replace them with new ones, when their systems that are already in place can be retrofitted and be made to operationally again. It's about a three-hundred-thousand-dollar savings by using the sa, the systems we have in place.
My question, sir, wasn't to be disrespectful, there's really two, only two legal ways a municipal entity can engage in a contract. One is through a state master lease, and the other is through competitive bidding, unless it's under a certain amount, and one-point-eight million certainly doesn't qualify for that. All right, so, go ahead, sir.
Okay, so the process, after, um, after the RFQ process, in which we are on, it's MPA four-thirty-six, and we are listed as a state pre-approved ESCO. ESCO stands for Energy Services Company.
Council of Commons has a question.
Do you have a copy of the statement of work that you bid to, that I could look, get to?
We didn't get any of that. Any of the backup.
Do, do you have a-
Request for proposals?
For qualifications, I mean, didn't know, didn't submit that to you.
Do you have a statement of work that was required under, to get to the one-point-eight?
Do I have a, excuse me?
Statement of work? That shows all the tasks, the, the equipment that they're recommending?
Yes, that's in the book that I've left you on your seat.
That's in this book here?
And he'll take you, I know there was, you know, there was some emails going around town, you had sent us an email about it, wanted to make sure we was sizing the project correctly and stuff, and that's what Mr. Murphy will explain to you in detail tonight, or to approve the master lease, and he'll explain to a building committee, I think you're gonna represent the council on the building committee, so you hear it then, whatever your pleasure is, but it is all in that book, if you wanna read it and get, ask questions after the, you know, after, but we like the, the, the thing is, we want to get the funding and-
We just got the book, how are we gonna read it? We just got the book, how, why are we gonna read it?
We're prepared to take you through the, the key pages that you need to. I mean, I didn't know we were gonna be here at ten-thirty, I didn't know you had a, you know. We wanted to do this at the finance committee, and the finance committee ran into a discussion on your own and on races.
Go ahead, we don't need to make a motion till eleven.
All right, so I'll walk you through the book. We have a two-stage process. We have a preliminary investment-grade audit and a final investment-grade audit. So once we get released, to start looking at people's buildings, uh, we go through with our engineers, and we evaluate all the mechanical and energy-consuming systems in your building. Um, and from there, we develop our preliminary investment-grade audit. The difference between the preliminary and the final is the preliminary has budgetary pricing and estimated savings. So what we do is, we basically, it's a pre-qualification of all the measures that we find in your buildings, so that we can go through and find out which measures need to go forward, which measures get dropped off, which measures have high paybacks, and which ones are very good paybacks and help fund the project. Uh, in this process, um, we, we segregate out the things that have the higher paybacks and try to put them in different groups. The preliminary investment-grade audit for this job was also providing a second purposes to help with the ride, um, submitted under the Energy Services, uh, Section Six, um, that says that RIDE will help reimburse, one of the, uh, the, the items is energy services. And in order to do that, you needed to have an energy services plan, so the preliminary investment-grade audit can serve as that energy services plan. We've also taken all of your schools and put them into Energy Star Portfolio Manager, a, a program put together by the Energy Star and Department of Energy. When we get to the final investment-grade audit, the final investment-grade audit has firm fixed prices for your budgetary cost. We go out to bid, um, for each of the measures that get approved, uh, we go through our open-book price, which is in the book, and we apply the direct cost that comes in from the subcontractors to that open-book price, and that establishes the cost for the measure. In this book here, uh, through the process, we have developed, um, the preliminary investment-grade audit, and in the back of the book, for the one-point-eight million, if you go back to your third tab, the third, um, the, what is it, the, the second, um, paperclip, this is the phased approach to the project. We have a, a section of, of measures that are by school and by measure. We have a section that's by phase and by measure. So if you go to that second tab, it basically identifies all the measures by school that we were looking for, for the one-point-eight million dollars. It also, uh, identifies a potential ride reimbursement, and identifies a potential rebate based on prescriptive measures. Um, we've been in contact with National Grid to try to ascertain what the, uh, rebates would be. We can't know for sure until we do the full submission of all the applications for each school, um, but we are, we are hoping that we'll be able to get around, um, a hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand in, in, in rebates and incentives back. The Rhode Island Department of Energy has a program called-
Rebate?
Excuse me?
It's a one-time rebate?
That's a one-time rebate, yes. Um, there's also an enhanced incentive through the RIDE PAP program established by the Department of Energy. Uh, that, that is also conduit through, uh, National Grid, and we've been in contact with Mike Skinner from National Grid about getting access to some of that funds.
All right, so I'm looking at your salary, um, your potential rebates are four-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-eight.
Which page are you on?
Um, on the master summary sheet.
Okay, the, the book is broken up into the first-
Summary matrix.
Second paperclip. That's what he's, uh, going on, it's a green, this column's green. These are budgetary numbers, he's telling you the actual numbers, you know, thank you. And so, you're gonna read that. This is the total cost of the project, with the rebates and guaranteed energy savings, et cetera. That's what he's talking about. So what page is that, so everyone?
That is summary matrix R two.
Right, the, the information from these matrices in the back of the book are all the same. It's just they've been organized in different manners. So under the first tab, we have all measures-
E C I.
All measures, all schools, so we broke that into the four phases that we talked about. So where you see the column, um, budgeted costs for selective measures in green, those are, uh, those are, um, firm fixed prices that we've gone out to local mechanical contractors and electrical contractors for installation costs. We've selected a low bidder, and we placed him in our open-book price model to establish what the budget, what, what the, uh, the firm fixed price would be for the, for the work.
Okay.
Um, and the next column is the ride reimbursement, um, that Alex and I are hoping to go visit with Joe DeSilva from, um, RIDE next week and present the same project to them, uh, for, for reimbursement.
Mr. Murphy? Council Waverly?
Thank you, Mark. On that issue, and I really, breaking it down, that's really what it comes down to, is that ride reimbursement, because if we can pull seven-hundred-thousand dollars out of this investment right up front, um, it makes things a lot easier. Can you tell me, in your experience, do you know when we'll get the seven-hundred-thousand?
Um, it won't be a time to fund the project for the summer. The RIDE process is a fairly involved process. It's a two-stage process.
It won't be till next year, but the hope is, on the ride piece of it, on the rebate,[1726.51] It won't be till next year, but the hope is, on the Ride piece of it, on the rebates, some of the rebates, we would be willing to bring the project in line so that debt service and energy guarantees are similar, are identical. Um, the six or 700,000 we get from Ride, we wanna roll that money into the, starting to do some of the Phase Two work next year when we get that money.
See, that's what I'm concerned with, Alex, is you're gonna take the money out of this, and this is a whole, this whole thing is about getting the $700,000 in advance.
It is, but, but that, but that $700,000 will be, will be, will be used in the Phase Two project, it's, it's still-
Yeah, but then you've created a budget gap in your, in your, in your budget because your debt service is $205,000, but your savings is 150, so you just created a $55,000 budget gap.
That's what I'm saying, with the other, with the-
But you have 700,000 in front.
With the other rebates, if we choose to, we would bring the, we would bring those, we would bring the size of the project, see, we've, we've got authority to a million eight, but let's say we get 160,000, 170,000 from, from National Grid, maybe now we do the project at a million 630. That debt service will be different than 205,000 a year, might be 175 a year.
Here's the way I look at it, is if we could take the 700,000 that we're gonna get in a year or two, and provided the master lease allows us to prepay without penalty, we borrow the 1.8, we then get the 700,000, we pay down the master lease to 1.1 million, we'd save about, um, a quarter million dollars in interest over the 10-year period, which I'm sure the taxpayers would enjoy, and our debt service would be about 125,000 dollars a year, and our savings would be 150,000 dollars a year, actually saving the school department 25,000 dollars a year.
But then we would no have, we'd have no, no funding to, to do additional work down the road.
Well, couldn't you come back to us again and ask us for another, another lease?
Well, we can, but that $700,000 has been, is, comes back to the school department anyhow now.
Well, it would go against the, the debt.
Well, it would come to, it would, it would come to the school department and we could, and, so, yeah. I mean, if there's, if there's building work that needs to be done.
You, you, what you're doing, you're playing a cat and mouse game, trying to preserve the amount to go to Phase Two, correct?
That's what I like to do, yeah, it makes total sense.
Right, but, but the savings realized and what the town cannot have to tax for in the following year, I think is what Council Andy and I are kinda pinpointing here, that that was the strategy at getting the complete project completed. Phase One is this year, what is Phase Two?
Phase Two would be, Phase Two's about, it, it, the biggest piece of Phase Two would be univents, mostly univents in the school department, I won't say.
A few boiler rooms as well.
And, and some boiler rooms, but the univents don't work. The equality in the school buildings is, is, is poor. We don't bring fresh air into any of the classrooms, all that type of stuff. That stuff is in Phase Two. We wanna get the things that save us money in Phase One, energy management systems and that type of stuff, so that we're saving some money, and then Phase Two, start to do some of the things that, you know, for, for safety and health of, of employees and children and students and stuff in the buildings. The, the total project to do all this stuff would be about 6.7 million dollars. That's why it's broken out over, and, and we might not be able to do some of it each year, we might, it might take 10 years to do, but-
But, but what I'm trying to say is, you, you're playing cat and mouse, you're gonna have revenues coming in, and as long as you can pay the payment on the debt service, you're free to use that excess refund from Ride and/or the 165,000 dollars from the energy company-
Yep.
-to do anything you want with it.
Well, to, to, to do capital repairs. We would do capital repairs.
And capital repair, not necessarily directed toward energy conservation.
No, but, but that's what I go, that's what we'd like to do, and remember, if we spend that 700,000 dollars, we get 40% back on that, so we now, we got another 280,000 dollars, so just the first year, the 40% reimbursement on the 700, if we spend on the school side on capital items, dwarfs the 250,000 dollars in 10 years of interest.
Do you have that in a spreadsheet to talk about that at some other time?
What?
I mean, is that all figured in calculations here?
Well, it's not figured in the Phase One, but if we get the set, when we get the 700,000 dollars, you know, as we spend that money, whether it's spent on energy conservation or if we need to fix a roof, we'll get 40% on that money down the road. So, if we spend that 700 and something thousand dollars, we're gonna get two, we're gonna get 280,000 dollars back from Ride, if we spend it on additional capital items.
So, with one eye, you're saving, you've got energy savings in the left eye, but you have a revenue stream in the other eye to offset other capital expenses.
Yeah, you're gonna get an F cap plan that shows 13 million dollars-
So, you're gonna borrow, we're gonna ask us to borrow 1.8 million dollars so that you can offset your CapEx spending?
I'm gonna, I'm asking to borrow 1.8 million dollars so you can start to bring school buildings up to, up to where they should be as far as energy efficiency and comfort and safety for people that work in them.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Councilor Waverby?
We don't need to borrow 1.8 million, I think that's Council's, uh, Korn's point and also my point, and that is, if we're gonna get rebates, shouldn't we use that money to receive the rebate to reduce the debt?
And that's what I'm talking about, I, I've said it a couple of times, the rebates that we get from, other than from Ride, from National Grid and whatever, we may size the project and set up up to 1.8 million, we get 168,000, I think is the estimate, maybe we'll size the project of, but those aren't done yet. We ask, we, we think we're gonna get them, so that's why it's up to a million eight.
Why not use the Ride reimbursements to reduce the debt? That's the big number, 700,000 dollars.
Yeah, because, because we have no other source of, we have no other source of, of funds to, to join any of the capital repairs.
Counselor Higgins said you could come back and ask for a master lease.
Excuse me?
Counselor Higgins stated you could come back and ask for another master lease. President.
Yes, Ma, Council Murray.
You, you said earlier, and I believe that's in that first phase, is the savings from doing this work, correct? So, you got an amount in, in there, in other words, if we didn't, if we didn't do it, obviously, you know, I know, that's what I'm just pointing out, there is a savings on that part, by, by doing the work, correct?
I'm not sure I followed you, Councilman.
Huh?
I'm not sure I followed you, excuse, I'm sorry.
You're gonna do the work, there's gonna be a savings, I think it was mentioned earlier, on the, by doing the work and upgrading the system. You're gonna save money, correct?
We're gonna save, we're gonna, we're gonna save that estimated 154,000 right off the bat.
Right off the bat?
And utility savings.
That per year?
Yes, each and every year.
150, how much?
154,000 is the estimate.
What is the interest cost, what is the thing that's gonna be?
The principal and interest is gonna be about 205, in 10 years.
So, where does the other 50,000 come in from?
The school department would have to budget it. Or, if we choose to use rebates that we're gonna, that we think we're gonna get from National Grid and others, maybe we'll borrow a million six, and instead of the debt service being 205, it'll be 175, and that'll be a 155 to 175. But, for, for 15, 20, 30, or 40,000 dollars of us putting in our budget, it's well worth this work that has to be done. There's no other source of funding to get this work done. These systems, these systems are of habit.
Well, I wouldn't, uh, certainly some of the schools are old, you know, like the high schools addition and stuff.
You go by North Cumberland in the wintertime, it could be 10 degrees, every window's open in the building, it's ridiculous.
Some of the other schools, you can't regulate the heat, and it doesn't make sense. I mean, it's like all the old state buildings, you know, it's, it could be 80 degrees outside and the heat would be, uh. My concern is, and I, is the mayor still there? Sorry, man. My concern is that he's talking about this year, 1.8 million, and then in the future, up to 6 million dollars in spending, if you will.
If we do everything?
If you do everything, without voter approval.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that at all, it may-
There's no bond involved, you-
Well, that, well, if it takes us six, seven years, I would hope that between five, six, seven years from now, the town will somehow go out and do, um, a bond issue. I know public safety is kinda like the next thing people are talking about, but there's ways to structure bond issues that you could fit us in by just paying cap interest a year. There's different, there's different ways to structure some, a bond issue so that the school departments can start to do some of the repairs. The school department can't fund major capital repairs through its operating budget, just can't.
I understand that, but we can have a bond approved, just like we did with CHS 2010.
Exactly, maybe for Phase Two, you, the, the, the town council or a new, uh, council will wanna issue a bond for schools, but-
Mayor? This is a lot of money.
Again, again, this is-
It's a lot of money for us to decide in a half an hour who authorized the spending.
I mean, that's up to the council to determine which way they wanna go, I mean, this was, uh, put on the agenda and to be discussed, but I would also say, the only thing in front of the council tonight is 1.8 million dollars, which is a guarantee on the savings that's gonna be in the contract, and there is reimbursements up to 40% from Ride, uh, that we qualify for, and that I'd encourage the school department to use, uh, in this process, and so, the, the dollars that come back in this, in this thing just make a lot of sense to me, you're guaranteed, you get a 40% reimbursement, and then you also have, uh, position yourself of potentially some other energy rebates. So, if this all goes back to, to my, you know, the budget time there, I think the school department has got a good program here in terms of the reimbursement strategies, and we're gonna come out more than hold, if the, if the school comes back a year from now, two years from now and wants 6 million dollars, you'd have to take a look at the proposal and determine whether it makes any sense or not. To me, this makes sense, for the reasons I just stated. The, the guarantees, the reimbursement from an account that Ride is sitting there waiting for us to spend money for improvements in schools, uh, that we, by the way, that we've used for the upgrades of the safety measures that this council, uh, approved, a very similar proposal at 670,000, I think it was Brian, right, in that range, right, so that, yeah, so, and with the same thought process, which was, first of all, we wanted to create safety in the schools, second of all, we have reimbursement coming, uh, that we wanna take advantage of, that reduced the cost for those safety measures by 40%. So, this is, this is very similar to what was done there, and it makes sense to me, uh, based on what I've heard, and, uh, but I don't know what the next phase could look like, and it, I'm not gonna be, most likely not gonna be here when it's, when it's considered. It's possible that it, I wouldn't support it, it's possible I would support it, depending on the nature of the, of the proposal.
I'm, I'm just telling you that the, that the energy audit that they did, they identified 6.7 million dollars of items that would, that would improve, um-
How is their fee determined?
Well, that's in the 1.8, I, I'll let him explain that in a minute, but-
Well, I, I, well, it's-
What I'm saying is, whether we-
It's 10 minutes out, Alex.
If we do Phase One and you never do the other phases, Phase One was what we're doing, it's not like, well, we don't have the six, seven, so why even start this? No, they're all stand-on, they're loaned projects.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Alex, uh, just on on me, it's a big chunk of money, has the school committee, has, 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 have they voted on this, has there's been a discuss, or, or what's the process to, to reach this?
The school committee, the school committee has been, um, um, in the, in, has been discussed at several, several school committee meetings, every few, every few weeks, I give them an update on where we stand with the audit and that type of stuff. I haven't taken the award of the, uh, to, to the school committee, because it didn't make sense for us to award something to a vendor to do work for us that we didn't have a source of funding to pay him with. So, the first step was to get the source of funding, we will then go to the school committee, and Mr. Fiorillo's a member of the school committee, I think he could tell you that they've been pretty, very much in the loop, and I think there's 70 support for the school committee to do this.
So, we're really only authorizing a funding mechanism, we're not, we're not hiring this gentleman, we don't really have anything to do with them.
You're just a conduit for us to borrow 1.8 and we will-
We don't really need to be informed on the details of the project.
We would keep you informed on the details.
Other than the fact that it's being, it's gonna save money. Mayor?
We have the building committee there that-
Yeah, well, I don't know if they're gonna have anything to do, 'cause it seems like all the work's been done by this company.
Well, I think the building committee does have us a lot to do in terms of approving the expenditures, uh, and, you know, making those recommendations.
Well, the process that we went through before with the CHS 2010 was that the building committee had to approve them, and then the council had to approve them. Now, it seems like the school committee's gonna approve them.
Well, the school committee is gonna approve hiring the engineering company to do the work, ENE, the, the, the energy management system.
Councilor Korn?
The, the ma, the biggest reason for the building committee is, the biggest reason is, when you submit your application to Ride, if there isn't a building committee in place, you don't qualify for the 40%.
That's not why I ha, I have-
No, but I'm telling you, I'm telling you, that's the biggest reason, 'cause-
That's not why it's in our charter.
Having a building committee is worth 700,000 dollars.
But that's not why it's in our charter.
No, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm just telling you, that's the reason.
Counselor Korn's first.
What, you know, you wanna hire this company, you have total control over the funds, income and outcome. Your, your tone is that the building committee is a paper committee because you just needed it to get approval.
I'm just being honest, that's the major reason for it.
You have taken possession of this capital asset, invested a lot of money in systems, and failed to monitor and maintain those systems for any benefits in the past. How can I be convinced that that won't happen again? Number two, you have guaranteed savings of 153,000, what was the number?
Yep.
How can you guarantee that? What if you don't make that number?
Then they write a check, for the difference.
So, they have to offset that check?
Right. And I could have him explain the way that-
Is it debit their fee or is it a direct payment?
No, it'd be, they would write, well, I, we would write a check.
Is that in some sort of contract between you?
Yes.
Who's the committee asked to hire?
And, and the first part of your question was, and I agree with you 100%, whoever put the systems in place-
There's information that you were-
And never maintained them was foolish, but I, I think in an email I told you that we wouldn't go forward unless we knew what maintenance costs were, and that maintenance would be included, and we do know, the maintenance cost on the 11 buildings for these energy management systems will be approximately 49,000.
I mean, I, I, I am in total support of doing something to save energy in our schools, because I've been in classrooms for ten, for meetings and I'm sweating even with the windows open. I mean, I am absolutely on board with that. Funding it, asking us to look at it in 30 minutes is a problem for me. Talking about the building committee that we're trying to form, that really has no functional use, because you will have control over all purse strings. So, if, if it's a requirement under the contract, then what is the function of the building committee in terms of contractual requirements to get the funding?
Well, the building committee can absolutely be in, involved in the project, how the project's going, what, you know, phases of the project, it's, I mean, they should be, I mean, they'll be representing both the school committee and the town council, we want total transparency here, but the other piece of it, it's not just this energy project, when we submit our application to Ride, we're gonna include other things in our F cap plan that may require down-the-road, um, bonds to be issued or whatever, you know, we have a, we have a 13 million dollar F cap plan that the building committee will get and can decide what items they think should be addressed next and that type of stuff. There'll, there'll be plenty of work for a building committee over the years, but I'm not gonna say, it, to me, the, the immediate need for the building committee is so we can get the application into Ride to get 40% funding.
Mr. President? By charter, the building committee shall have the responsibility of planning and supervising the construction thereof. It's in the charter.
So, so, I don't think we've come and said that the building committee can't supervise the project.
We're trying to find out what the process is gonna be, it seems like it's already been all done.
Well, no, we've done an audit so that we know, we've done an audit so that we know what items we would go after first in order to, to generate the most savings in utility savings.
Who asked for it?
Councilor Schmidt.
Okay. I think we're all trying to get to the same place, but we're having a little difficulty. Perhaps I could just suggest two things. One, if we waited till our next scheduled meeting, would that really set you back on?
We may not finish the work this summer, so some schools may go without energy management systems.
Okay, would you be averse to, uh, as part of the sublease agreement, to dedicate the Ride reimbursement and National Grid rebates to prepayment of debt?
Well, I, I, I would, I think the school committee would have to make that determination, not me.
All right, let me explain some of the problems we might be having with the group. When did he deliver the backup material, Madam Chair, uh, Clark? I can tell you that I went on clerk base to review the agenda yesterday, and your item had no information. That was yesterday. You can't come in here with all this material, I know you asked for it to be on and I accommodated you, but not give us a chance to look at it.
Well-
And then, it's a, it's a 1.8 million dollars, I mean, I'd, it'd be a leap of faith in you, Alex, for me to be ready to move ahead, because it's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money, and we have been talking about it though for months, and we've had a different, we have been talking about this for months, and we had one presentation to them.
Who has? Not us, you, you wouldn't have committed.
We've been, we've been before the council one other time on this, to, I guess it was the finance committee-
Maybe.
-um, to, to, to brief them on the entire project, there are many people, I think There are many people, I think the council, most of the council people are well aware of the concept and everything. What you didn't know is what projects we would be pulling out, and that had to be done over the last month or so when we were doing the audit. But the concept of bringing modern day equipment to the school department, boilers and energy management systems, has been being talked about probably for three or four months.
When do school close?
Excuse me?
When do the schools close for summer?
I think the 16th, 13th?
So, like, in 10 days?
My children would tell you, "Sub."
Huh?
My children would say, "Sub."
What's the lead time on the purchased items?
Boilers are about six, seven weeks. Energy management system, we have a fair degree of engineering to do, engineering wiring diagrams and things like that, so that's-
Do you have pre-construction stuff you can do while you're waiting for the other items?
Uh, yeah, well, while, while, we have to go through-
What is your first day on the job of any school in the town? After they close on the 13th?
After they close, we would probably be, we would like to be in there probably three weeks, have people on the, on the, on the premises two to three weeks after we get the award to go.
So, the third week of July, or the second week of July?
Right, uh, right after 4th of July, it'd be great, but we, I need to get drawings put together, and I need to get them out to the electricians, and we got to get them-
What is the school getting?
You got, for, for price-
Next Thursday.
We have, we have prices based on points list, and we've given them-
Not this week.
Sketches-
Not tomorrow.
As far as exactly what their wire runs up, but where they're terminating the different wires to-
How much you have in contingency?
Excuse me?
What, what's your contingency?
I have about a 2 percent contingency on the controls.
On sketches, not?
Well, it's, I mean, these are controls, electricians, that do this all the time, but before they go out there, we like to have everything documented, so my engineers can come in afterwards and verify that they terminated everything correctly. So, we have an engineering phase, there will, a final engineering phase that'll last about two weeks. Ordering equipment's probably three to four weeks for, for lead time for controllers.
Alex, so you're willing to take responsibility for this? That 2 percent contingency is enough? On sketches and experience?
Well, I'm on-
If you tell me yes, I will vote for it.
I still think that's a job, it's building, to determine what is the appropriate contingency. I'm very confused.
Mr. President, I think that-
Counselor Lambie.
I think the matter at hand is, how much, how much financing is, are we willing to approve for this project? If we're willing to, if, if, Alex, you were able to say to us, we'll use the $700,000 towards the debt, then this council would only have to approve $1.1 million worth of debt.
Well, no, because you'll need the $1,008 now.
It's a matching, it's matching, Mr. Lambie, it doesn't work that way.
No, but the school committee-
It stays matches 40 percent of what we spent.
You wouldn't get them, we wouldn't have the money this year.
You have capital surplus funds, you've been, you were just saying last week, telling us you had ca, capital surplus.
Not anywhere near that amount.
I was going to use-
Not near $700,000?
No.
Even though you, according to the audit, have $3.2 million that I, I wanted you to use for the computers, and-
Right.
And we didn't.
Well, the 3.1 change is really $2.6 million, because we've appropriated $525,000 from the budget. So, there's like a million dollars, there's money in there for capital, education supplies, and there's a reserve for some medical, the medical expenses that we had.
We're asking to use it, and then put it back once, once the money comes in. That's what, we're not asking you to use it permanently, like I was suggesting regarding the computers, we're asking to use it, and then, once the rebate money comes in, you, you can use it.
I just, I, I can't make that, I can't make that commitment, I'm not a schooler, I remember. But I'm telling you, the $700,000, once we spend that money, whether it's on energy systems, or it's on security doors, or it's on removal of asbestos tiles in some of the schools that are, you know, starting to chip and we replace here and there, you're going to get a 40 percent reimbursement, you're going to get $280,000 back on that seven again. It's more than the entire interest on the project.
I'm going to break it down for you. If, if you're telling me I can save $150,000 a year in energy, that sounds great, and it's an improvement to the school, but if you're telling me it's going to cost me $205 to do it, I'm not going to do it, I'm not going to vote for it.
Well, it doesn't have to cost you $205, because we've up to, up to $1,008, even the project, the project with everything in it doesn't even come to $1,008, it ended up being $1,793, so it was less than $1,008. But we've got other rebates that we can apply to bring that debt service level down. We tried to give you a worst case transparent, you know, as transparent as can be, if we borrowed a full $1,008 and paid it back in 10 years, we could pay this back in 12 years and make it completely neutral. We're trying to, we're willing to pay a little bit more upfront out of the school budget, not to go, you know, 12, 15 years out, because, you know, it doesn't make sense to pay for things 15 years from now that maybe have, don't have as useful life as that.
You're going to take 10 years to pay this off?
We want to pay it back in 10 years, not 15.
You could do 12.
You could do 12 and make it neutral.
Master leases that long?
Excuse me?
Master leases that long?
Yes.
I mean, there's a pretty good-
Yeah, but we want to do it 10, because we want to minimize the interest cost, we're willing to pay a little bit more upfront. And those energy savings, that's the guarantee, they will grow, because if the energy savings are based on what your costs have been now, if seven years from now, gas is much more expensive, and you're saving more gas than you would have if not, the savings are bigger than 153.
I mean, 10 years from now, we could be using batteries and solar power.
That's right, and that's why I don't want to be 15 years, though. I don't think, you know, I'm not sure that will happen, I'm not sure we'll ever be in a position to make those deep capital purchases to, to get to the-
Who is, who's? So, Murray, I'm sorry, I thought you were pointing.
No, no, I had my hand up before, just the lady jumped in.
I didn't see you.
It's okay, I, I accept your apology.
I didn't apologize, I said I didn't see you.
I don't accept your apology.
Good, because there wasn't one.
Let me, let me ask you this question, is, if this is delayed, you have worked on figures of what this is going to do, because I hear it, and if the council delays this, there's a good chance we can't get it through for this year because of the-
We'd get something done, but we may not get all the schools done. I wouldn't want to say we got five schools done, but you schools didn't get done.
What will the delays, will the delays cost us? I know you've got figures-
No, we'll check out, we talked about that, the-
Can't you find my address? 14 days until we meet again?
Can I?
And stop there.
Well, absolute-
Counselor Murray has the floor, please.
If, if, if it was, if, if-
Go ahead, I said, go ahead.
If we were comfortable in passing, absolutely. But what if it doesn't pass then?
Alex, answer Counselor Murray's question.
Oh, sorry, I thought your question was answered, and it was answered.
It's my question.
Please, please.
All I'm trying to get is, if we do, and it sounds like they want to delay it, if it's delayed, does that affect the cost of the project?
I don't believe so.
It doesn't affect the cost, no.
It, it affects the amount of project you'll be able to accomplish during some months.
I don't understand why, if it's only two weeks. How long does it take then to, to a master lease? Must take time to do that, too.
No, but we could stop the project, because I don't have to, you know-
You could start the project without the authorized financing.
Well, no, if the financing's approved, if it takes, if the fine has to go out, and it takes three weeks to get money in, that's not going to, the, the key, you know, the key thing, and as Counselor McCurns said, I, there's no problem delaying and advancing and stuff, but if it doesn't pass, you know, then, you know, we advance, you know-
I had Counselor Kearns's question, because he didn't have the floor, so if you want to have the question, repeat it, Counselor Kearns.
My apologies, I thought the council was, was done. My question was, if it's a two-week delay, could the school department fund whatever they need to get started, so that we had more time to absorb this?
You mean enter to two master leases?
No.
Oh, could you, uh-
But I understand Alex's point.
Could you use your humongous surplus to quote?
No, I wouldn't use my humongous surplus, I would just delay paying the other weeks.
No, Alex, listen, as upfront money to begin the process before we actually approve the master lease. In other words, I, I think they're not comfortable, because they've only been listening to this for 35 minutes, you didn't get to finish before the finance committee, which is why we have a finance committee, as you know, you have one to, to make recommendations, and our materials didn't arrive until this morning.
No, and I understand all of that, but understand also that fiscal has refused to vote on this until we have had your approval.
Who has?
The fiscal subcommittee.
The finance sub, you call it fiscal subcommittee?
We call it fiscal.
Oh.
Potato, potato. But we will not approve the project until we have your approval of the funding. We're not going to spend a dime on this.
You're going to know where the money's from.
Right. I don't want to just throw money out the window, and then find out that we're not going to get approval, and then find out that we just spent all this money for nothing.
Counselor Lambie.
Can I make a motion table to June for 18th?
Counselor Lambie moves the table to June 18th.
Seven.
Senator Counselor DeCosta, it's not debatable. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
I don't know what hap, to me, they were more yeses than nays, than I heard. They had two people that vote. Go, 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 Counselor Schmidt.
Yes.
Counselor Kearns.
Yes.
Counselor DeCosta.
Yes, to table, right.
Counselor Lambie.
Yes.
That's four, all right. Counselor Dwyer.
No.
Counselor Murray.
No.
Chair votes yes, because I'm not comfortable, so, you know, if it passes, fight it to, come back in two weeks.
That's, that's fine, we will. Just point out the two people that have, the two, two of the three people that have more, have the most knowledge of the-
This gentleman, you doesn't have to come back.
On the project, voted yes.
I'm sorry?
I mean, voted, voted to move ahead. The two no votes were two of the three people that have had the most information presented to them.
Well, that's true, perhaps, yeah, so that's good for you, because, I mean, the more information we get, this gentleman, I don't think, has to come back.
Well, that, that's-
He wants to come back?
Yeah, I think he needs to-
Counselor Dwyer, you'll have another committee here, finish what you were hearing, if you need it.
We, we should, and we will, and next time, I hope we'll have more time, because we'll have less on the agenda, to be honest with you, but, again, it is-
This is a meeting, to be honest with you, Alex, that I thought was going to last 30 minutes, but the zone changes took up two hours when they, they didn't need to.
No, I know.
Well, kind of, they didn't need to. So, go ahead, Counselor Murray.
You know, I want to apologize to you and your, your group for being here since 5:30. It is a difficult, you know, topic, obviously, and I just think, you know, I don't know whether you have to come back, but it's up to you, but I know, behalf of myself, I apologize for you beeping and bawling around this long, and ending up this way.
I only question in why, whether he has to come back, in that we're not hiring him.
But if you have questions on the project itself-
But if we're, I don't think we're going to have questions on the project. I would, I think our questions are about the finance.
We may have questions on it. I, I mean, I hate to get to the point in two weeks and, and-
I mean, why would you have questions on a project when you can't have any input in it?
Well, the reason you're not voting for the project tonight is because you haven't seen the project. You, you certainly understand a master lease concept and the reimburse, you know, there's no-
Well, they already voted to table it.
No, I know, but I'm saying that-
Somebody wants to move to-
There's no, you know, you, you understand that, it's the, the reason you delayed it was because you want more time, so I think I got to have him here.
Based on a concern of engaging in a, in starting a pattern of borrowing large sums of money instead of going to bond, number one, and two, of my miss, what I don't understand being the function of the building committee in this project, based on your statements, okay? That was my concern. It's not the borrowing process, it's not the fact that I agree you need to become energy efficient, I also have a concern with a 10-year payback on a project that could become obsolete, even though you don't think it will.
Well, it won't become obsolete, I mean, we've got boilers from the 60s.
Anyway, the table that, so, there's no further discussion on it.
Could I offer a suggestion for the future meeting, that possibly if the school committee's going to meet their fiscal end, maybe they could make their recommendation conditional on what we do in two weeks, so-
No, Alex can pass that along and, and soak it on.
And so they, they can come back to the finance subcommittee in two weeks and-
Apparently, they don't have much faith in us approving it. All right, it's been tabled, let's move on. Resolution 1422. Counselor Kearns? It's 11:30.
I, I understand the-
It's good that they need to stay tuned to me some tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, could we-
Thank you.
Could we just have a special meeting?
No, no, we don't have a special meeting. We have a lot of budget hearings this month. But you can ask, and if everyone wants to, I guess I'll have no choice.
Could we have a joint meeting with the sub, finance subcommittee and your fiscal committee, so that-
You're free to do that, if you want.
Hey, I'm game.
All right. Mayor, what, you want to do on the other ones, the resolutions, you want to proceed? You guys are all set, we tabled it.
Okay, so it's tabled for the 18th, unless there's a-
Two weeks.
Unless there's-
Joint meeting sometime in the-
No, if there's a meeting, it's only going to be on a finance, a fiscal finance committee level, not going to be on a full committee level, or a council full, you don't understand?
So, I, so I-
Unless, unless you're notified by-
We may get together on a, on a finance subcommittee level before the 18th, but definitely on the 18th, you come back before the council.
Before the full council?
Full council.
Right, okay, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two resolutions, purchasing equipment, and we'll see if we can do them fast. Resolution 1422, authorizing Mayor McKee to enter into a contract with Norfolk Power Equipment of Barrow, Rhode Island, for the purchase of one Kubota F3990 forward 39-horsepower diesel engine finish mower with a vacuum assist. Is there an amount involved?
I think it's a fiscal note there, about $27.
No, it's not in the title, so now I have to open it, and I got to read it.
$27,000, I believe, is a fiscal note.
And you can't tell, I'm getting goddamn cranky, excuse my language.
$27,000.
$27,276.
Thank you, it's in the budget, it's in the budget, and it's, is to mow the lawns.
Can you put the amounts in the total in the headings from now on?
Um, I, I should say too, I don't have the amount, but I know I-
It's $27,000.
No, 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 not, not that amount. Mr. Stoick left me a message today, and I wasn't able to get back to him. I guess he does have a trade-in that he's going to be able to trade in, so this, it, it's an amount, it will be an amount not to exceed this $27,276. I guess he has something to trade in that will lower this price.
That's what it is, yeah. Motion to approve?
Second.
Counselor Dwyer.
No discussion?
Hold on, everyone. Counselor Dwyer makes a motion to approve, segmented by Counselor Murray. Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President.
It was actually Counselor Lambie.
Oh, all right.
Question, what's the intended purpose of this purchase? Why do we need to purchase this?
It's replacing a 15-year piece of equipment with a new piece of equipment, so we can mow the lawns in the town.
And, better fast, more efficient. They've just recently purchased two of them.
That's right, and so we keep, you know, we're keeping up on our equipment so that we can, you know, the Public Works Department can provide services.
So we can mow more than one mower at a time.
All right, thank you.
Why can't the, Little Lee cut their own grass? Mr. President?
Counselor Kearns?
Did we not just reduce the amount of grass we cut by a large amount with the artificial field?
Ah, now you're getting to the bottom. Yeah, but we still have all these Little Lee fields.
As much as on, Counselor, I tell you, the equipment does get old and it needs to-
Let me tell you, when I was involved in Little Lee, Counselor Schmidt could tell you, we were never satisfied with how they cut the grass, but that wasn't this administration.
Yes, sir.
Second, yeah, we're under discussion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, that passes 7 nothing. Next, resolution 1424, authorizing Mayor McKee to enter into a contract with Patrick J. McCann Roofing, helping tuck it not to exceed $34,300 for the replacement of the roof of the OCYL building. Mayor?
Yes, this is a roof that's in disrepair that we repaired last year for a couple thousand dollars to get through the winter, but it's a, it's a leaking roof that's causing damages to the building, so this has been, it's been bid, and this is recommendation from-
This was the lowest qualified bidder?
This was the lowest qualified bidder.
And it's, there's fiscal note, there are funds available?
Yes, there are.
Counselor Murray?
I make a motion to accept this.
Counselor Murray moves to accept, and by Counsel DeCosta and Kearns, any discussion?
Mr. President.
Counselor Lambie.
Briefly, I was surprised that we didn't have a second bidder. This, this was properly advertised, I'm, I'm sure. There's, there was an ad attached to the, to the spreadsheet. Was there, is it timing? I know the roofers are busy this time of year, and a $34,000 job may not be appealing to most roofers. Did, is there, was it timing you put in the bid, or, or is this something that we could have done?
It's a flagrant.
I, I, um, I can't speak to the roof. I can say, I, I know we got calls from upwards of five to seven vendors on this, but we had one bid, I don't, I don't know why they elected to not bid, but it was interest.
Thank you.
Thank you, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, that passes 7 nothing. Next, are the appointments to the School Energy Conservation Project Building Committee? The council has two appointments. Counsel Kearns has indicated a desire to serve, however, we could take nominations out of the three nominees, are there any nominations? Counselor Murray?
I make a motion, we should table this because of the discussion we've just previously had about the, this committee.
Counselor Murray moves to table, is there a second? Fails to lack of a second. In, in terms of your, your point, Counsel Murray, I think we need to get this committee in place ASAP.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Well, I think it's up to them to determine.
If I can.
Counsel Dwyer nominates Counsel Kearns, is there a second?
Second.
Is there further nomination?
Yes, President.
Counsel Kearns? Counselor Schmidt, I'm sorry.
We, we have two appointments, correct?
Please?
We have two appointments, correct?
Yes.
I would nominate Jeremy Scott.
Counselor Schmidt nominates Jeremy Scott, segmented by the Mr. Kearns and Counsel[1766.04]